It's now two o'clock and I call this special city council meeting to order. And today, the city council is going to conduct a work session, only a work session, regarding the city's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2024, 2025. And just to remind everybody, we're not making any decisions today. We're just discussing here in the open and our city manager will be presenting, making a presentation to us and then we can ask questions. So no comments other than from the dais here today. And I now call on the city manager to provide the council with his presentation on the budget.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, welcome. I hope everybody had a great weekend, some good sleep after reading all the documents we sent out. As we normally do, I would like to begin with just a few announcements and then we'll start marching kind of into what we have on your, on your list for today. First, as many of y'all are aware, our chief financial officer left to go to another city. So this budget was prepared without our chief financial officer, but we had the incredible assistance and want to recognize Cheryl Brock, Melissa Trevino, both here to my left. Fun fact, when I arrived back at the city of Lubbock, they had been doing the budget without a CFO for over three years. So these ladies are phenomenal at what they do. They once again had to put up with me and all the late night Saturdays, Sundays and all that fun stuff. Both these ladies, I believe their entire staff, maybe save one, is here today. They did a lot of work. They will also be resources for all of y'all as we go forward between here and budget adoption. So questions, comments, if you can't get to me or I don't have the answer, these are the people that I will go and look at.
Jared, would you mind having them stand, the ones who work on this budget?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Cheryl, Melissa, Eric, crew, everybody that's down there, there they are. Some of them hiding in the back.
Amazing work. Amazing work.
So it's really a small group. They are very good. Counsel, I think we got to everybody before we begin today, but if we didn't stay late for us, there are some replacement pages for your book. So we call those erotic sheets, and that's a big fancy word, for something changed between when we sent that book to get it printed and where it stands today. We started printing that book as soon as we got our official numbers from the appraisal district and then very late Friday, they changed again. It's way too late to stop the printing, so we've worked back through that and you should have those sheets. If you don't, let us know and we'll get those put into you. I'm going to flip over and just quickly run through the big calendar. The mayor has said the operative things related to the budget this year. So August the 2nd, of course, which was Friday, that's when we got both of our no new revenue and voter approval rates from LCAD. That's done. We now sit on August 5th, so we're starting your workshops. We will continue those today, tomorrow, Thursday if needed. That will certainly be up to the council's pleasure. The next series of items that will occur begin on August the 13th. And on August the 13th, you see in there in the bold, it says, take vote on proposed maximum tax rate. That is not adopting a tax rate. That is not picking the final tax rate. It is what we need for statutory compliance to have what I would term as a not to exceed number. So it is the number we will put in our publications, go through all of that. You will not actually vote on a tax rate. You don't have to have this finished until your first action on September the 3rd and your final action on September the 10th. So this is something we have to have to fill in a blank to go forward. You're not obligated to adopt that number. You just can never then adopt a number bigger than. You could adopt less, but you cannot adopt more at that point. Counsel, if this schedule holds, as you can see, you would be finished with the adoption of your fiscal year 25 budget on September the 10th. Any questions on the budget? Okay. We'll flip back over and we'll start with all of the fun stuff that we have anxiously waited for. Okay. Here's the schedule again. This is really the schedule for the 5th through the 8th, if the 8th is needed. Counsel, part one, which is the one we're going to look at today, that has all of the big picture items in it, all the things that I think ultimately become newsworthy that we'll see reprinted, what I think will be the biggest questions you have, and then ending with the general fund operating and capital. If we are able to make it through that today, we're not required to, but if we do, I think that sets up some better days for Tuesday and for Wednesday as we go forward. Okay. We're going to kind of catch you up on where we are with your current fiscal year, fiscal year 24. And just a few reminders, really, the adopted budget in our current year, $965.6 million. On the left, the pie chart represents the various revenues that fund that budget and the right is the division of the expense of those budgets. So this has had practically no change from when it was adopted in last September. The only changes in here are those various budget amendments that the council does periodically throughout the year. General fund, general fund, of course, is where we provide those services that most often do not carry a particular fee. So this is your public safety. This is your public works, your streets, your parks, all of those types of items. The top set of bars on there represents the funding sources for the general fund and the bottom represents the expenditures from the general fund. Again, statistically, there's not a change there from where we started last, last September. Reminder of where we were on property taxes. So we captured the full, the full value of new growth. It's what you often hear people call new property. We did have a 3.17% increase in the MNO, or the maintenance and operations portion of the tax. And then the interest in sinking, or INS, and we'll probably call it INS or the debt rate throughout the rest of today, that change was due entirely to the first issuance of the voter approved 2022 street bond. So remember, $200 million was approved. It's divided into a five-year process and you pull down part of that money each of the five years. Sales tax at the bottom, sales tax is the driving force behind your general fund budget. It actually is more dollars to provide those services than are the property taxes. So the current year, we are budgeted to collect 98.1 million in sales tax. Our estimates, and we will have another estimate early Wednesday morning to see how we're doing, but our estimates are that you will end the year at just a little bit over $100 million. So about 2.5% over the budget. We took a big swing when we set the sales tax estimate last year. It does look like that is working. It looks like we will have a little bit more, not as much more as we had in the year prior to that. Okay. If anybody can read that, I'll just change places and you can come over here and do the rest of this. This is our fancy way of trying to do rolling 12 averages on sales tax versus inflation. So you'll have that. It's in your printout. You have it electronically. The real operative thing is to kind of look over to the right and you see how when you'll always see a dip in this chart at the beginning of a fiscal year. Fiscal year starts in October, but you don't finish closing out the prior year's sales tax for the first two months. So you'll always see the drop. Don't worry about that. Look and see where it's coming back above the line. And over on the far right-hand side, you see where we've got a tick up for fiscal year 25. That represents our best estimate that we're going to give you on the new sales tax number, $105 million. We'll go ahead and tip the hat to that and how that will carry forward net of inflation. So welcome to study that and we can talk about it later. It's plus or minus one standard deviation, all that fun stuff. Okay. Still in fiscal year 24, what did we do in rates? What were those changes that were made? The one we were the most proud of was a reduction in your stormwater rate. So we went down 60 cents on tier one and then it pro-rates out and gets bigger as you go past that. There was no change to the wastewater rate. There was a 25 cent, so one quarter, increase in the water base rate and then a volumetric increase. That's where you see the tiers on water. $1 for residential solid waste collection, 25 cents a ton on what we call the tipping fee. So the tipping fee is generally not a charge that any of your residents pay. This is for private haul of trash into your landfill. And a whole lot of that private haul that comes in is actually from our neighboring cities because we're the only one that has, has a landfill here. Kaliche Canyon, that is what most people call our old landfill. Sometimes you'll hear it called landfill 69. It's actually up on North Q. It's kind of just west of the airport, west of the interstate. That is our old landfill. It does not take household trash. It can only take inert materials, which is generally going to be called construction and demolition debris, or C and D. So that's what that one does. There is a small citizens transfer station out there if they can get stuff to there, but maybe not all the way to Abernathy. We can pick it up and move it from there. But those were your rate changes we had for that. These are a little bit series of repetitive slides. It's just talking again about where we stand with core inflation. I've had a couple of y'all ask and of course, I've spent the morning staring at what's going on on Wall Street right now. The market's not just in the United States, but in a big part of the world, really getting hammered. We've had some not as favorable news as we expected out of the Fed. They are teasing a small rate cut that might come up, but the jobs reports were not where they needed to be and inflation is still remaining at 3% or above as we go across. So this is just a historical graph. The big spike, of course, occurred about mid-year in 2022 and that's where it stabilized at 8% year over year. Unemployment rate, we are now at 4.1%, so we're a little higher than pre-pandemic levels. I'm not concerned about that because the unemployment rate was 3.2% the prior month. So what you're seeing is just the impact of summer, just, just kind of seeing summer run through there. We also, when I read that report, I did note, our labor participation rate in Lubbock is higher than it has been in many, many years. And that, that's a good thing. So the people in the market are trying to go and get jobs and to work. Workforce improvements, counsel, you saw this one last year. It was a new metric that we had added. The big boxes, that's just your total FTE, full-time employee. That's your total FTE count in the city going back to 2021. And then you're seeing the vacancy rates. Last month, we were at 6.59, so that continues to come down. We actually are at the lowest point we've been in over eight years, so well, well over pre-pandemic. Inflation, just again, we're kind of seeing some things over here. I'm, I'm sorry, this is the revenue slides. Current year, 300, or proposed year is 310 million. That's for general fund only. Compare that to the base year of fiscal year 21 at 246. Your general fund revenue over five years has grown by 4.8% per year. You see the sources over on the right, those are your three main categories of sources. The big change, the biggest single change, of course, has been in sales tax at 5.1, property tax about 4.8, and then your various other revenues, that's franchise fees, all that kind of stuff. Same thing, but now this is on the expense side. Over to the right, you will see some slides or some charts that kind of just give you an example of what has changed in our world when we try to buy things. So the top left one of those small charts, that is a standard pumper for the fire department, which is the smallest of the fire trucks that they buy. And you see that those have changed from about $840,000 to $900,000. They actually have had the lowest rate of inflation. You'll see two of these in your budget later that are over $2 million apiece. It's a different piece of equipment, but expensive. Our police SUVs, those have gone up from about $38,500 to just under $60,000. The two at the bottom are what we generically call our white pickups. Those are half tons and three-quarter ton trucks and they've gone up way high on us. It's just affecting everybody as you go through. Fuel prices, some of y'all may remember when we actually had to do a budget amendment because of fuel. It is still high. It's not nearly as high as it was. We're not getting killed by fuel the way we had been. But I would draw your attention to the bottom right-hand side, which is the side loader trucks. That's our standard truck that goes up and down the alley. Those have gone from about $220,000 each to 300. They were actually more than that a year ago. They've come down just a little. You're going to see a lot of budget impacts here in a little bit that are related to these side loaders. While we have not quit buying them, we're still buying them at the rate we need. We can't seem to get them. So the 21s just got here and we still have a lot of trucks that were bought in early 2022 fiscal year that are not here yet. So we're just, the longer we keep other trucks, the harder they are to keep going. A few more, we've all talked about the cost of doing roads. And remember, I've said it's about $4 million a lane mile for a new road, so five-lane road times four, $20 million. Here's the component costs of that. Concrete arterials up from $98 to about 115, 115, excuse me, a square yard. Asphalt, 91 to just about 109. And then the bottom two, that's just true material cost. That's when we go to buy these components to do the work that we do. So asphalt for street maintenance is up from about $50 to 67.5. And then you see the concrete on the right, 132 to 150. So everything's expensive and we know that. Questions on the current year before we jump into the prior year? Okay. Hearing none. We're going to lay out the new budget. I do have one item. I'm going to kind of give an attaboy to some folks. Counsel, I emailed this to you earlier this morning. You've probably not had a chance to see it. We have just completed our annual credit re-rating process, this one with Moody's. We still have another one to go, but this is Moody's. I think the big news is Lubbock Power and Light has been upgraded on its standard credit to AA3. So that was a big step. We expected that step and it is largely related to finishing the transition to ERCOT. And most importantly, since Lubbock Power and Light is not buying electricity and then reselling it now, their risk has gone way down. So their credit rating is getting better, really right on the schedule that we had planned for that to get better. So Joel and Harvey and that board, they have spent years putting that plan into place and it, it has worked. For the city, we have a AA2. We maintained that. We also maintained our stable outlook. When you have a chance to look at that detailed document, there's some really neat metrics and statistics as to why. In a lot of ways, we meet the AA1 standards and that is still my goal to get us there, ideally to get us to a AAA over time. But that will tell you a lot about that and it'll tell you a lot about the community through the eyes of people that truly look at it all in a dollars and cents basis. So this is good news and congratulations to Lubbock Power and Light for doing that.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, I may just interject one thing here for our new city council members here. If you have a question as we're going through any of these pages, please feel free to just speak up.
Yes, sir.
I remember my first session, there were a lot of acronyms thrown around and I had no idea what they meant. So I, I've tried to get us away from doing that, but they still pop up every now and then. And if you don't know what that means, please do not hesitate to ask. Just punch your button and get the answer to your question because I don't want you to go for it in a fog. You need to know what we're talking about as we go forward. And I guess the other, other thing I might just say, if on a particular page you do have a question, don't hesitate to raise it then, rather than wait all the way to the end because you may need a question answered right then and there and I'll try to call on you.
Totally agree, Mayor. Thank you. Good point. I will do my best to at least explain the acronyms once, but when they slip up, please catch me and stop me. So counsel, from this point forward, we are presenting to you our proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. So it's the next new year. As we do every year, I will remind you, the budget that's in front of you is the budget that in my experience best meets the needs of the city, subject to the constraints of which I'm aware. From this point forward, counsel, this is your budget. So we lay this all out over the next two to three to four days. Please, as the mayor said, ask any questions. Ask them here today. Chase us down when it's over. Catch us between here and the next time. We want to put all the information that you need in front of you as we look at this budget. And again, you don't take an action vote until September the 3rd. Next two council meetings, the budget will be listed as a work session item. We will take as much or as little time as council needs at those two deals. But as the mayor said, please don't, don't let this run past and then get to the end. If you want a detail answer, we have details. We'll need to go get them, but we will go and get them for you. If you have a what-if question, ask us those what-if questions and we'll bring them to you. You don't have to have it all this week. You've got nearly a month so that we can get through all that and we're here to help with that. So again, this is a balanced budget. It meets the requirements of state law. It matches what's required of your charter and from here forward, counsel, this is for you. So let's jump right in. Do all the fun stuff up front. So where do we stand in this proposed budget on the tax rate? As you saw from the last year, we are capturing the full growth, full value of new growth or new property, however you want to call that. The maintenance and operations, or the MNO portion of the tax rate, represents a proposal of 2.28% above the no new revenue rate, 2.28%. You're allowed to go to 3.5. If you go over 3.5 with one exception, that is what's called the voucher approval rate. So that's when you would call an election on your proposed tax rate. Our allowance is actually greater than 3.5 because you're allowed what they call an unused increment. So let's say you did three a year ago, you carry that half percent over. We're nowhere close to any of those numbers. We're not proposing any of those numbers. Just know later on, you're going to see lots of stuff get published in the newspaper that has very confusing and very big tax rate numbers. They're not what we're showing you. We are proposing a 2.28% over no new revenue for maintenance and operations. The second part of your tax rate is interest and sinking, the INS or the debt. It is going up and it is going up strictly due to us pulling down that second pot of money for the 2022 street bond. The INS rate is not a negotiable rate. It is just mathematically calculated and that is the rate that goes forward. So let's go down to the table there in the middle of the screen. We'll go to, to the right to fiscal year 2025. What the real pieces of the tax rate are, for maintenance and operation, for MNO, this is for your general fund, it's .364738 or 36.47 pennies. The interest in sinking, the debt, the INS rate is 11.2664. That is up from the prior year, which was 10.9783. That increase is the cost of pulling down that second bucket of money for the street bond. If you want to make the same comparison to maintenance and operations, last year, maintenance and operations was 37 cents. This year, it's 36.47. The value of a penny on your tax rate changes each year and it will generally go up. So this year, one penny is $2.32 million of revenue. Does that make sense? If I got that? Okay. Let's go down to sales tax. Again, this is the bigger piece of your budget. So fiscal year 24, we budgeted at 98.1. That was an increase of 8% over the prior year's budget. You can see the prior year below it. I'm going to skip that and go to where it says FY24 collections forecasted. So this is our estimate. This is what our model tells us. We expect to end this year, the current year, at 100.6 million, so about 2.5% over our budget. Prior year, we were bigger than that over budget, but we were a little tighter this time. Thus, we take that number at the moment, I'm comfortable adding a 5% on top of that estimate. So this budget is built on 105.6 million in your sales tax collection. And questions on that? Okay. Hearing none, we'll keep going. Talk again about those top-line items. Here's the rate changes that are proposed. So for wastewater, we propose $1 on the base rate. Counsel, the bulk of that is to account for where we might end up on the surlateral program. Part of it is because it's the year that that one needs to be adjusted. Part of it is held back so we can work forward on that surlateral issue. Okay? Remember in this one, $1 is roughly $1 million over the course of a year. It's just a hair underneath it. All right? For solid waste, as we continue with the escalating cost, as we continue moving towards the transfer station, we do need one more dollar increase on there. That will take solid waste to $19.50. It's $18.50 today. And then you see how that trickles out as it goes through the commercial accounts, the landfill accounts and all that. A question to ask is what in the world is special waste tipping fee? Special waste are generally going to be some version of hazardous material that is brought into our landfill and it has to be handled separately. So it is more expensive to bring that to us than it is just regular typical solid waste. We have no changes proposed in stormwater and we have no changes proposed in water. So those represent your overall rates that are built into the budget you have. Let's talk about positions. We can go through this. You can see some of the eliminated positions that we have made. You can see some additions. So on the left, those are positions we're removing from the budget. On the right are positions we are adding to the budget. So an apprentice operator at our wastewater treatment plant, three water meter technicians. Remember that pre-ERCOT, most of that work was done by LPNL staff. They now have no cause to be doing that work. So we need to get our crew adjusted to meet the workload for that. I've tried over the last, this is the eighth budget that I've been able to write for the city. I've been trying to go and find our major departments and set up their succession planning. The next big one that does not have a number two position to go with their number one position is solid waste. Ms. Haney has carried that load and she has done it phenomenally, but we're moving into big changes in that world. She needs to have an assistant director, in my opinion. So we are adding that. Public service officers, that's at the police department, civilian position, five patrol officers, two animal services, customer service reps. This is really your phone answering and your dispatching to get our, our officers where they need to go. And then a division chief in the fire department. Below that is your net change. So the general fund, even with the additions that are up there above it, that's plus one to the general fund. It's minus three, water and wastewater fund. It's minus 17 through Lubbock Power and Light. So the net change overall to the city is minus 19. That's what your total FTE count will go down by, even if we were able to add these positions. Okay? And as we get to individual departments, we can hit all these in great detail if you would like, so.
Yes. Yeah. Ms. Collins.
Yeah. Maybe the, maybe the question should wait. Of these 19 employees that were taking off the budget, how many of those were actually, or any of those actually filled?
I can speak to everything other than LPNL and none of those were filled.
Okay. Thank you.
Most of them, my general rule, if they've been vacant for a year or close to a year, we need to, to know why and most often they'll get removed. I think the, the newest position that was eliminated out of the general fund was the support specialist over at the court. And that position has been vacant since the end of November 23. It was one of the newer ones.
Thank you.
Okay. They all are funded positions, so they carry an expense load in a budget. It just wasn't one that got spent.
What is the public service officer? Is that in, in communications?
Excuse me. Those are the civilian positions. They're used in several different places at the police department. Front desk staffing at your patrol stations is one of them. I think there are several work in the headquarters. I really need more than one here because for the next year, a big part of that work is going to be helping the police department move out of the existing property and evidence facility and into the new one. But they are non-sworn positions. They are not law enforcement officers.
Right.
Let's look at some capital items next. So really happy to come to you. Street maintenance at a total of 14.5 million. It's at 13.5 million this year. The 1 million increase is coming straight out of your general fund. So we will continue to put So we will continue to put 14 million in cash from the general fund with 500,000 cash out of Gateway. Counsel, two years ago, changed the Gateway resolution to allow a focus of a portion of those dollars to go to maintenance, basically inside the loop is kind of how we divide that. We're not cutting 500 maintenance from inside the loop out of your 14. We're adding to it. When I get deeper into this and you have the detail on general fund capital, you'll only see 14 million. That's because we take the Gateway money in a separate capital project inside of Gateway so we can prove up. We set this money aside. This is what we spent that money on. It's an accountability deal. But in total, you'll have 14 and a half million. So not very many years ago, you were at about 6.45 million dollars in street maintenance and it was not cash. So since that, that was the fiscal year '17 budget. You've taken that from where it stood to 14 and a half million cash in the fiscal year '25 budget. Now, I normally get asked, is that enough? No? No, it's not. The real, the real number is probably somewhere close to 18. We don't have 18 in cash and my, my basic budgetary sense is you don't do street maintenance unless you do it with cash. Because even if you do a seven or a 10 year, a really short term financing, you've lost the value of that asset before you finished paying for that asset. Number two, there are limits to how much we can get pushed out the door in a year. That capacity is growing every year. As long as we can match it with funding every year, we'll keep doing more street maintenance. So 14 and a half. Questions on street maintenance? Okay, underneath that, you see the rest of the capital program, the vehicles, the equipment. We've got 67.8 million in capital improvements planned. This is just out of the general fund. For fiscal year '25, 24 projects, 19 of them are cash at 24 and a half million and five of them are year three. So we're in year two. So we'll move to year three of your 2022 street bond. And you see there, that is two segments of Upland, two segments of 114th and the unpaved roadways. This group is east of I-27. Counsel, remember you will also spend the cash in hand that does the rest of the unpaid roadways. So we're starting to get bigger and bigger swipes at working on the unpaid. Here we go, getting into the details of vehicles. We are proposing to purchase 148 vehicles. 89% of those will be cash funded. The big, the big hit though is on the ones that are not. So there are 16 vehicles we propose to use tax notes. And let me explain what a tax note is. The legal name of it is a TAN, a tax anticipation note. Sometimes they're called tax notes, sometimes they're called anticipation notes, but they're all the same. A tax note is a maximum of a seven year funding. So why do we propose to use that and use it on what? We use that on expensive equipment that has greater than a seven year lifespan. So we have finished paying for these well before we have hit the usable life. I think the best example, if you go to the second line of that, you see the two fire rescue platform trucks, 2.1 million dollars each. Lubbock Fire Rescue does a phenomenal job with their equipment program. They get 14 years out of them. So you have more than paid it off and you are still getting the benefit. Now, they rotate them to a less busy station, ultimately to a reserve or to a standby capacity. But we have access to the use of those trucks for 14 years. Underneath that, you see the solid waste side loaders. The side loaders that we are replacing this year are 2014 models. They are 11 model years old. Seven years ago, we got barely six years out of the trucks. I would love to get these to about an eight year replacement, but until the market frees up, we're not, we're just not going to get there. So we are getting, again, a greater use than what we're paying for them. Farther down that list, you see a solid waste landfill compactor at 1.3 million dollars. So counsel, probably not high on the summer vacation list, but when it cools off, I would love to take you all out to the landfill if you've never seen one of those. That is a pretty impressive piece of machinery. Those have the spiked steel wheels and each of those steel wheels is about six foot tall. They cannot be brought into us with either the blade on them or with the wheels mounted to them. They're too big, too wide and too heavy, but got to have them to make the landfill work and they're very expensive. A little farther down, just another one that I always find interesting, you see alley maintenance grader. So that is a normal road grader, but it looks like it got left in the dryer too long. So these are actually miniaturized road graders designed to work in our 20 foot alleys. So we cannot take a full size road grader in there, even with the blades turned, and not wipe out the gas meters, the electric meters, the dumpsters and all that. So we are proposed to replacing one of those. The cash vehicles, there's 132 of those. So that's, that's your next list that's down there. 70 police vehicles. And then you just see the list as it works its way on through. One thing I want to highlight on this, we're, in the days, and this does not exist anymore, but you'll hear about the old days of the quote master lease, pickup trucks lasted six years for us. Not because they were worn out, but because that lease had paid up, they'd turn them in and we would get new trucks. The median year model of the pickups that are being replaced under this program this year is 2011 models. We are getting good life out of them. Now, my caveat to that is we've tried to find what's that outer limit. When it's time for us to replace them now, there's pretty much nothing left of those trucks. I need another one to take its place. But I just wanted to illustrate to y'all that we do everything we can to maximize the value that we get from paying for this. Those police vehicles, now those are individually issued vehicles. They're not pool vehicles. There are some 2013s and 2014s in there. Those officers take care of them and they've worked good. We believe, and I'd have to go back and just haven't had time, we believe this will be the last of the Crown VIX to. So you have some very old Crown VIX that just didn't get the miles and the hours on them that the SUVs did. The police department has managed to use all of those up. So some of them are coming out this year. Questions on our vehicles and equipment, it's both?
Just one question. So these, all these vehicles, the tax notes and the cash funded, all are within the 24.5 million on the page before. Is that correct?
No. The 24.5 million are actual capital projects.
All capital projects. Okay. So that doesn't.
We don't have, we don't have these totaled.
We don't have the total on these.
Yeah, they're, they're in a later, I think they're in tomorrow's slides. But we'll get you that number.
All right, thank you.
It's large. It's a big number. Okay, any more on that? Talk about our employees. Again, the city's attempting to absorb as much of the healthcare cost increase as we can. Those numbers look like this. On the city side, we are going to take 7% of the healthcare and 5 and a half percent of the dental. And we are asking the employees to adjust by four and a half percent on the medical. That's employees and retirees. And then five and a half on the dental. And remember, we have a 4% across the board raise. Four and a half percent healthcare is not equivalent to 4% raise. You're not going negative on any of those numbers, but I will get asked that at some point over the next few weeks. You can see the detail of that down below. We have the 24 rate, the 25 rate, and then how those changes carry their way through that. You have a huge and very good health plan for your employees. It's, it's expensive. Would also argue that for a lot of what we do, it is really one of the greatest benefits that we have to offer. You don't see it on this page, but we have a lot of new faces. So let me go back and remind, we do retiree healthcare up to the age of Medicare eligibility. We do retiree healthcare up to the age of Medicare eligibility. If they are a full city retiree at the age of Medicare eligibility, they come off of this plan. So they go to the marketplace is what you'll hear it called. And we do provide a small stipend that pays into an HRA, a healthcare reimbursement account. For a retiree that may be 65 and is in really good shape, that HRA should bill for them. If they're not in as good a health or as they just age and have the normal things that happen, those are their dollars once we have paid them and they can draw them out for those Medicare supplements. Questions on healthcare?
There we go. What is the qualifications for the retiree allocation for, how many years do they have to work at the city?
Sixty years of age and 10 years of service. And then what's the other one? Anybody help me out?
50.
Oh, there it goes. Curtis? Does it work? There it goes. I think Chief Kane has said 50 years of age and 20 years?
For the fire pension.
For the fire pension. But that's retirement eligibility for them. The health plan has a different component because not everybody's on the, the fire pension. Is Elizabeth in the audience? Can you answer that for us, ma'am?
Yeah, they have to have 10 years of service.
10 years, okay.
10 years of service.
Got it.
Okay.
And, and this, for the 25, 2025 rate, the, at the bottom, the 25432 employee and family, that's per month, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, gotcha.
It's per pay period? So it's per pay period, which would be 26.
500 a month or so.
Yeah, a little, a little over.
Yeah. Thank you.
And one more caveat on health plan. The health plan does not match your fiscal year. So your health plans run from January to December, whereas your fiscal year runs from October to September. That becomes relevant because we did make some adjustments in the plan to try to help with the costs, but those have only been in play since January, not since last October. There's a whole separate series of slides on the health plan, but just know that those two don't line up. Any more on health plan? Okay, continuing on, again, the 4% COLA for both civil service and non civil service employees. We have the remaining dollars from the 500,000 that was allocated in ARPA for Education Assistance Program, ARPA being the American Rescue Plan Act money that's out there. We will be analyzing that about October to see what kind of uptake we have because if there's dollars left, that's something that will have to be reallocated so you don't use it or lose it, I mean, by the deadline. Focus on that is to help people get GEDs. A GED is free to take the tests. The prep courses cost money. We will help with job specific associates, bachelors and masters degrees for that. And we're starting to see some benefit from this program. Few other things. Counsel, I tried to keep this slide as close to last year as I could. So the stuff on the right that now says additional programs, last year, that said coming soon. So these are just a few things that we've changed across the board. We still have the CDL Commercial Driver's License Apprentice Program, the Summer Field Apprentice Program, which is just wrapped up for the year. And I think we have already hired two of those individuals. We had the full time to part time shift we did in parks maintenance that continues to be successful beyond at least my wildest dreams. Colby and his team thought it would work and they were right. In the middle, we continue the Educational Assistance Program. The CDL training there is only different from the apprentice program. These are current employees, they're existing employees, and their opportunity to promote is often based on whether they can get a CDL or not. So we'll help them do that. My long term goal remains to bring that program in house and we're down to one criteria we need to satisfy to be able to do that. So we'll keep up with it. To the right, we talked a year ago about adding the office apprentice program. So we did do that this summer, first time we did that. Being able to allow certain office workers to have flexible work schedules, that is done. Counsel, remember back in February, that's actually late January when we did the planning session, we talked about proportional annual leave accrual. So civil service jobs have 100% proportional. We did not have that for non civil service. We're not mirroring. We still have a step program, but we're allowing people to see a benefit, a potential monetary benefit to what they're acquiring in their leave programs. Everybody ready for numbers? Okay, this table represents the entirety of the proposed fiscal year '25 budget. So the various funds, and this is the revenue side of it, we'll do expense in a moment. The fund category is on the left and I'll talk a little bit about what those are. And then the dollars, of course, are over on the right. So to the left, the general fund. These are your primary categories of revenue that come into the general fund. You have property tax, you have sales tax, others, and you'll see that's a small number. These are the unique things like a mixed beverage tax or something like that. You have franchise fees. So franchise fees, generally speaking, is a dollar amount from a franchised utility. So think cable service, think internet, think fiber optic, think natural gas, not inside the LPNL area, but in the South Plains electric area, electricity. It is basically a rent that a utility pays back to the public for the use of the public right away. And that's what it generates. We get in the details, there's some really interesting things going on with franchise fees and short version of that is what used to be big franchise fee payers or little bitty ones and other ones are only going up slightly. I don't think this revenue category is really going to grow much in the future. Most franchise agreements are no longer local franchise agreements, they're state level. And that's, that's not a problem because the rates really didn't change when they did that. But you now see a single provider providing multiple services when in the past, that may have been two or three entities collectively providing it. The next one, COLU, City of Lubbock Utility Franchise Fees. These are those fees, just like the franchise fees above, that are for your city owned utilities. Those are enterprise funds and enterprise fund means it has to balance as if it were a business. It is a rate funded utility. This is what they pay in there. You have fees for service, exactly what they say. This could be anything from a building permit fee to a tap fee, I mean, any of those types of things, renting a park. Fees and fines, smaller category. Pilot is payment in lieu of taxes. So going back to the example of the private utilities, think, think of the gas utility. They are assessed property tax on the value of their physical improvements that are located in the city. So they're treated as any other business or piece of property in the city. A pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, does that exact same calculation for the city owned utilities. So this includes Lubbock Power and Light, the water system, the wastewater system and et cetera. You have the miscellaneous other revenue, you have transfers, you'll see these all in greater detail. Let me call out excess reserves for CIP. That stands for Capital Improvement Program. Every year, and you'll see a sheet here in a moment, that talks about all the reserve funds the city has. Your general fund reserve, it accumulates money over time and it should. It gets those dollars primarily two ways. One, if we say, hey, for example, sales tax revenue. Sales tax revenue a year ago was going to be 98 million dollars. We're actually going to collect 100. The difference, that 2 million dollars does not go to a department to spend, rather it goes straight into the reserve account. Any revenue greater than the budgeted revenue goes straight into that reserve account. Anytime our expense comes in below its budget, that dollar does not hang out in a department's budget for them to find a way to spend it. Rather, that savings goes straight into the reserve account. We do a calculation every year. We're required to have a certain amount. I believe it's 20% reserve in the general fund. And then the difference, however much is left, is what we call an excess reserve. It is available for reallocation or for use. On this line item, you see that last year, we had basically 7.5 million that we used out of excess reserve for the general fund. This year, I've got a little over 12 and a half million. So I'll do the math real quick in my head. That's only going to leave 10 million. That's only going to leave ten million in excess reserves in the general fund. I'll make my standard disclaimer, that makes me nervous. That's how you start your next year's street maintenance, vehicle replacement, and all of that. But twelve and a half million is programmed out of that excess reserve, and I'll show it to you in detail here in a little bit as we go. So all in, the total of your general fund for two thousand twenty-five is three hundred and ten point three million dollars. That's up from two eighty-eight point four in the current year. The next row on that sheet says Internal Service Funds. So these are the funds that exist kind of behind the magic curtain to provide services to the rest of the city operations. Think of accounting, think of finance, think of IT. Think of what we're seeing in here with communications and media, your radio system, all of the additional software charges that come in. They are all assigned on a unique basis, so it's not, we just don't take the total and divide it out. For the IT charge, they will literally count your software packages and the number of devices that are connected to the network. But those are your internal service funds. Your insurance programs are inside the internal service funds. They also are discreetly budgeted by a department, but they roll up to a total. So internal service funds, about ninety-seven point million, ninety-seven million compared to ninety point six. Insurance and software are really going to be your big changes in the internal service funds. The next group are the enterprise funds. As I said earlier, these are considered to be a business unit, and thus each of these departments, if you wish to call it that, they have to have their revenue equal their expense. If they have an additional capital project, they have to fund it and they have to cover it with their own fees, rates, or charges. We'll start with the airport. One more caveat. None of your general fund dollars go to an enterprise fund. And unless it is an exchange for service, the dollars don't come out of here and go into a general fund. So these are truly as close as possible, standing on their own. So airport, new budget of twenty point three compared to an old budget of eighteen, or a prior-year budget, or about a two point three million dollar change. Lubbock Power and Light, this budget has gone down by about seventy-three million. Again, that's working out the last piece of now that is a TDU, or Transmission and Distribution Utility, rather than a vertically integrated power company like they were a year ago. Stormwater, twenty-three point four to twenty-five point seven. Water and wastewater, you will get to see detailed budgets tomorrow, separate, but remember they actually roll up to a single fund, that's how the credit ratings work and all of that. Water wastewater from one sixty-two-two to one sixty-four-five. And then your various small enterprise funds all roll up to about twenty-seven point eight. So taken together, the enterprise funds are four hundred and nineteen million. That is a thirteen percent reduction, and again, that reduction is all due to what's happening at LPNL. Special revenue funds, that's where you get into all of either your grant programs, or you're going to find, like, your tax increment financing zones, your public improvement districts, all of those are in there. They're all budgeted individually, but again, you total them up, and that's what you get here. So when the question is asked, what is the proposed city budget, it's that bottom line, it's nine hundred and forty-two million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand. Year-over-year, that's a reduction of three point one percent, or thirty million dollars. Yes, sir?
Mr. Blissian?
The transfer from the excess reserves for the capital improvement projects. Where can we find the information on the capital improvement projects that will be funded from the reserve?
All of these general fund capital projects are later in today's presentation, line by line.
And where specifically in the binder would I find that?
I'm sorry?
Where in the binder could I find that?
In this binder? The spiral one? It's in both.
If you look at the general fund expenses, you're going to see a transfer capital.
Turn to page ninety-one in the spiral-bound one. This starts your capital. Ninety-one is the ARPA, and then right after that, by grouping, it's broken out. Your volume two stuff that will start tomorrow, we'll have it for the enterprise funds. The ones in this book will all be general fund.
Does he want detail on these projects that pay one sixty-one?
In the big book.
Mr. Collins?
Debt service funds. Can you explain debt service funds on the revenue side?
Is a negative of a negative a positive?
Okay, yeah.
Push this one.
Basically, a debt service fund is a general government fund where all your debt goes through. In other words, like, on the revenue side, it's the money from the taxes that are issued, that are actually for INS, or your debt rate. Those go into this fund, and it pays all of the general government debt. Now, there are other general government things, like the TIFs, where their debt flows through there, but they're transferring the money in there to pay that debt. Only those that are literally general fund obligations are the ones who get the tax rate is for. And you're going to see it on the other side. You're going to, expenses are us paying the debt. The revenues are for us collecting the taxes to pay the debt.
For the general fund, it is primarily the revenue from the INS, from the interest in sinking.
Yes.
Depending on how debt was structured years ago. So there was a time where, like, water debt was issued out of the general fund. Water always paid for it, the taxes never paid for it, but the general fund was the payer, they had to sign the check. So in cases like that, those dollars would roll into this on the revenue side, and then they'd turn around and go right back out on the expense side.
Which is the way it's worked.
It's a sinking fund that comes back down to near zero, depending on the year. Any more on the funding summary? Okay. So here is the funding summary that really kind of takes the by source, and this is for your total city budget. It takes the by source and shows you how that breaks out. Same information, just displayed differently. All right, this is the same as the prior table, but this now is the expense side. You will see that these are all either balanced, to use the example we had a minute ago about the debt service fund, you see that at the bottom, you see the general fund. They're either balanced exactly, or they will be slightly under. So the question, if there was revenue that came in, why was it not budgeted to go back out? And I'll draw your attention down to, like, the special revenue funds, and I'm going to flip back and forth, hopefully without making us seasick. Special revenue fund, budget twenty-five, I'm back on the revenue slide, is sixty-seven point nine million, so call it sixty-eight. Let me go back to the expense side, and you see the expense is sixty point nine. This is mainly in your PIDs, your public improvement districts, and your TIF, and one pit accounts for the biggest part of that change, and that's the North Overton Pit. That pit has matured to the level that its collections are greater than its expense, but that revenue stays with them. We don't get to move it elsewhere. In the case of a few of these others, and there are going to be much smaller variances, that's really going to be where you're trying to push capital out, save dollars for something in the future. We'll see that same information now moved over. Kind of feel like I'm back at my eye doctor's. A better or B? Same information here, just in a little more graphical format. Let me see how the total city budget divides out. Okay, excess reserves. Let's walk through this. Start at the top on the left with the general fund. You can see the calculations where we had available cash at the end of September two thousand twenty-three, so that's when we start the current fiscal year, about eighty-five point eight million. We programmed a change in reserves of eight point seven million, a use and expense. You then subtract your twenty percent policy level from that, which is fifty-four and a half million, and that gives us a forecasted twenty-two point five million available at the end of the current fiscal year. One more to the right is the change, so we propose to spend twelve and a half of that twenty-five, leaving you, when we have this same discussion next year, with just a little over ten million in an excess general fund reserve. You're still above the policy line. I feel somewhat obligated to say this, still makes me nervous, but I think we're going to be good. So you see that. Carry on down through the rest of them, and you can see now the enterprise funds, you know, you've got airport, water wastewater, all the way down through there. If you are asked, what is the total amount of the reserve monies at the end of fiscal year twenty-three? It was two hundred and nineteen and a half million. It is programmed at the end of fiscal year eighty-four for excess reserves to be eighty-six point seven. We're using, all in, about seventeen point four million, taking us to seventy-eight and a half. Those total numbers are really not relevant, because each of these funds have to be managed separately. You can't move money between them with rare exception, and they all have different target
Mr. Rose?
Thanks, Jer. I'm sorry, the policy level, twenty percent of...
Twenty percent of expense.
Twenty percent of expense.
Okay.
And this, does the state set that policy level?
Well, not, no. Those guidelines are all set by your bonding agencies.
Okay. So that's to maintain your credit?
Yes.
Correct, okay. I'm just clarifying that, thank you.
Ms. Rock, could you turn off your microphone, and that way I can see people's names when they pop up? That's right, thank you, I just didn't see, that's what it popped up.
There are some unusual ones to continue that line of discussion, where it says special revenue funds. The top one is Gateway. Gateway, because it's really issued out of the general fund years ago, think Milwaukee, think of Marsha Shark Freeway, that was all issued out of the general fund. We manage it itself, it has its own revenue source, it's franchise fees. That one, we program seventy-five percent of revenue, and that's just because it is still primarily a debt service fund, the way it works. Your big funds, like water wastewater, general fund, Lubbock Power and Light, those are all set really by your bonding agencies.
Mr. Collins?
Help me to understand, available cash at the end of fiscal year twenty-three was two hundred and nineteen million. What are you projecting our available cash to be at the end of twenty-four? That's not on this slide, is it?
It's not. We would have to add back the policy levels of one twenty-four five to the excess reserve number of eighty-six point seven. It's just not a column in this table.
Two-ten. And that's two-ten because we've used twelve, or we're planning to use twelve, into the next budget.
Mm-hmm. Seventeen point four, because we're on the total line, but yes. They're big numbers, they're just not all available for use. Any more on reserves? If you're ever asked, how much money is the city holding, this one slide has all of those answers on it. Let's talk about the fund stuff. Let everybody turn their pages. So the numbers on this page are the tax rates for the current year. So this is what exists today, and you see across the competitive set, kind of where Lubbock sits at in that. I said back when we did our priorities workshop that I want to work, rates matter, they do. But the rate is actually the last part of the calculation. How much money we are taking from our citizens in exchange for providing services, to me, is really what matters. You're still going to turn it into a rate, I don't disagree, but I think we need to try to see if we can look at that just a little bit differently. So one way to do that is to look at what that maintenance and operations or the M&amp;O, what does your rate compared to everybody else's rate, what does that produce in dollars per person? Because that's the only common way to do this, dollars per capita. So you see on there, for the prior years, this isn't new stuff, Lubbock's M&amp;O rate produces about two hundred and eighty-one dollars per person. And you can see how the competitive set kind of schedules out across that page. Okay? I'm going to kind of run through three of these, we can go back and forth with them once I get them out, but let me kind of run through these. The next is sales tax. Again, sales tax is a larger driver of your budget than is property tax. That is very common, especially in West Texas and in any high-growth city. That's not unusual. You want to see this, it should be this way. This, we come, we stack up a little better, we get about three hundred and forty-six dollars per capita in your sales tax. And you see others to the right, bigger, you see ones to the left, smaller. So one that I've been asked about when we started trying to put these together and illustrate it, why is Amrelius so much higher, four hundred and ninety-four dollars compared to Lubbock at three forty-six? There's a simple answer to that question, and this answer applies to everything that's to the right of where Lubbock is on that chart. All sales tax rates in Texas are the same. They're maxed out at eight point two-five pennies per dollar. That's the same no matter where you are. Six and a quarter of those pennies go to the state of Texas. The local governments have access to two pennies. So how are the two pennies divided is what makes that difference, really. Lubbock's unique in that Lubbock County gets a half cent. So twenty-five percent of the sales tax revenue, it's not that people are paying less, they are not, but twenty-five percent of that local revenue goes to the county. That is very, very unique and unusual. It is also why your county has a tax rate as low as it does, especially if you compare it to similarly situated counties. That leaves one and a half pennies. One eighth of those pennies is what funds LITA, that funds your Economic Development Alliance. One and three eighths of those pennies is what actually comes to Lubbock, to the city of Lubbock, I'm sorry. If that were different, our light blue bar would be way over to the right. Again, I'm not suggesting that people pay less, they don't. People all across the state are paying the full eight and a quarter percent. It's just where does that local two percent get divided up? And in the case of the city of Lubbock, we're always going to, we're always going to be short on this side of it. Take the two of those, and you add them together. So this is your driver in the general fund. So from property tax and sales tax, again, on a per capita basis, Lubbock has about six hundred and twenty-seven dollars of revenue. That's what you have to spend out of those two sources. And you can see then, moving to the right, larger numbers, moving to the left. So again, to me, we're going to get back to rates, but what you're going to find, I think, it's about what's the cost? What's the cost to the local government? How much are we taking and what are we providing in exchange for doing that? So we start the ledger at six hundred and twenty-seven dollars per capita here in Lubbock. Here's why, at least the tax, the M&amp;O per cap, here's why it works that way. Here's why, at least the tax, the M and O per cap, here's why it works that way. Taxes are based on value, they're based on valuations. This slide captures, and it's relatively simple, you take the total taxable value divided by the city limits, so you get your square miles. So per square mile, Lubbock's about a hundred-and-fifty-two and a half million. Contrast that like To Plano or To Frisco, and you see those much higher values. Now, we have something they don't. We have got a ton of undeveloped land and space that's in our city limits that'll let us grow. We will move to the right over time. Plano literally does not have developable land left within the city limits. In fact, they're doing redevelopment, they're going up because they can no longer go out. Frisco has some open space, but they don't have a lot. They're constrained. Lubbock is not, Amarillo's not, Abilene's not, Midland, Odessa, your West Texas cities, we've got room. But you're kind of seeing how that value calculation. Let me try to turn that into something that maybe is a little more meaningful, a little easier to relate to. We don't tax individual houses, we tax on a valuation basis. But I've got later examples that you have to distill it to an average. Our tax rate applied on a house that averages just a little over two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars is what drove that M and O number on the earlier slide. You can take a lower tax rate and apply it to a higher average value, i.e., Irving, Plano, McKinney, Frisco. And even though it is a lower tax rate, it can be a significantly lower tax rate, the amount of money that took from that homeowner is much higher. So this slide right here is what drives that slide right there. You can go back, you can look at rates, there are all different ways to do it, but what you're getting to is valuation multiplied by some number to equal a revenue. So our proposed rate's forty-seven point seven cents, it's just a hair underneath where we are right now, forty-eight point zero-one-six-four. But in terms of what that costs our average home, it's much less than what you would see with a lower rate applied on these over here to the right. Does that make sense? Any questions about any of that? Doesn't change the budget, it's being presented just for sake of additional information as we go forwards.
Mayor Potem.
The population of Abilene, isn't it smaller than us?
Much, a hundred-and-twenty-five, a hundred-and-thirty thousand.
I mean, I can't help to notice that on all of these, they're in the higher end of everything.
Abilene is?
Yeah. Their M and O is higher than Lubbock.
Well, look to the right of this chart, that's why.
Ah, thank you.
But if you'll notice, McKinney, Plano, Midland are below our tax rates. Midland is significantly below our tax rate. But when that tax rate is applied, it's applied to this. You can do it on the total, or you can do it on the home. But it's applied to a higher number.
Mr. Atkinson, does any of that also have to do, I know we talk about the average cost of a house and then the tax rate against it, but does any of that have to do with other factors like industrialization or taxable businesses that, you know, are different, very different from city to city as well?
There are, Midland is a good example. Midland has a much larger heavy commercial or industrial base than does Lubbock. And generally, those carry a higher value per foot, per acre, per mile, we've done it per mile over that. That's not what's happening in Frisco and in Plano. That's just high-dollar development in a constrained environment. Plano does have a lot of headquarters, operations. Frisco has a tremendous number of high-end retail entertainment-type deals that take up a lot of space and carry a high value with them. Like I said, Lubbock will start marching to the right. And in fact, if you want a barometer of how we're doing, is how your community is growing and developing, this is one way to do that. You can absolutely take this and see the impact. I know that was new, but take time and soak that in and come and ask us questions and whatever, be glad to help with it. Okay, I have to read this slide to you, so if you'll humor me, I'll do that. Fiscal year 2025 operating in capital budget, the state required language, this is talking about revenue year over year. This budget, the proposed budget in front of you today, will raise more total property tax than last year's budget by seven million, five-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars, or six and a half percent year over year. Of that amount, the seven and a half million, three million, three-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-eight of those dollars is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the roll this year. So again, new prop, new growth, whatever you want to call it, those are properties that something substantial changed year over year. There was not a house on that lot. There was not a retail center on that corner. So that is new property. It does not factor in to the calculations when we talk about no new revenue, voter approval, all of that. So the opposite way to look at that is of that seven million, five-sixty-three, two-thirty-one, about four-point-two is increased tax on existing property, while that three-point-three, nearly three-point-four is the new property. So that's the division of it. Thus, the proposed tax rate is a tax increase. Here are your 2024 tax year rates. The no new revenue rate is forty-six point six-seven-four-nine. And I've just read that in pennies, cents. The voter approval rate without the increment is forty-eight point four-two-two-six, again in cents or pennies. We have available to us an unused increment, so this is revenue that was saved, that was not assessed in prior years. We have an unused increment that has a value of one point three-zero-three-four cents or pennies. When you add that, your new voter approval tax rate is forty-nine point seven-two-six-zero. We're nowhere near there. The FY 2025 proposed rate, the rate upon which this budget is built, is forty-seven point seven-four-zero-two cents. Look at value. The preliminary value, so this is a number we were provided in late February, was twenty-seven billion, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six million. The certified, so the number that came in in July, the certified number came down to twenty-seven billion, seven-hundred-and-eighty-three million, three-hundred-and-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. So it dropped by just under two-hundred million dollars. For tax year 2023, the over sixty-five exemption levy is twelve million, three-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred-and-eighty-eight. For tax year 2024, for tax year 2024, the over sixty-five exemption levy is now thirteen million, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, and thirty-seven dollars. The certified net taxable value, the number upon which we do all the math, rose to twenty-seven point eight billion, or a seven-point-six percent increase year over year. The value growth of Lubbock still continues, and it continues good. Certainly, you're seeing it in residential, but we're seeing it in all areas. At this point, the health is good. Now, remember, all of your tax year stuff actually ends on December 31st of the prior year. So all of these locked, December 31st of 2023.
Mr. Atkinson, the over sixty-five exemption levy, explain what that is, please.
That, that is the, that's the impact of what we commonly call the senior tax freeze, is what that is. So in that deal, when somebody turns sixty-five, they can freeze that tax, and then, of course, that doesn't change year over year, other than new people enter the age sixty-five and up bracket.
So that figure, whatever it is, thirteen million, is taken off? Is that, it's called a levy, but is it reduced?
It's, it's the amount that's assessed against that. Is that correct, Cheryl?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's how much you are getting in tax revenue from those that are within that exemption.
All right, thank you.
Does not change by appraised values, ever. It changes because more people enter that bracket.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you. So appraised values gave us a seven-point-six percent increase. The difference, and so we have a seven-point-five million dollar increase in our budget, and if we take that seven-point-five and decrease it by three-point-three-four-nine, we result in, here we are doing math in public, but approximately four-point-two million dollars. How does that compare, that four-point-two million compares in a percentage relative to the increase in appraised value?
It's less on a percent-to-a-percent basis. But you've got to remember, you have to take all the INS out of the calculation because it's a mathematical number, and INS did go up. When you change your M and O rates, how that over sixty-five levy is calculated slides the numbers in between both of them. There's another slide that you can see that on here in just a little bit.
So I guess the point is...
You also take out property under protest.
And I guess the point that I'm asking or trying to make is that appraised values gave us the opportunity of a seven-point-six percent increase, but the budget did not ask for, or, yeah, ask for, the budget presented is not asking for a seven-point-six percent increase.
That, that's correct. And another way maybe to say that is back up in that first paragraph, the increase in tax revenue is six and a half percent. The increase in valuation is seven-point-six percent.
But the six-point-five percent increase in tax revenue could actually be lowered because of three-point-three million dollars in new construction value. And so you would probably be talking about, and I'm, I'm sorry.
Keep going.
I'm making it harder than it has to be, I'm sure. But I think I'm, I'm getting to the point that while we're looking at new revenue, we're certainly not anywhere close to looking at all the valuation that was provided by the appraisal change.
That is correct. You are under that.
Okay. Maybe we can get our graphing calculators out, figure out what that is between now and sometime.
We, we can calculate what the revenue increase would be at either of the two voter approval rates, and then you can net that out against what we have at the forty-seven seven. Is that kind of what you're looking at?
Well, again, I'm just really trying to point out that appraisal increases provided this much, and your budget is not asking for anywhere near that much.
That's, that's correct. And so let me maybe, I hope not to confuse the issue, but let me add a little to that. And the mayor and others are always good to remind people, the city of Lubbock does not do appraised values. None of that comes from Lubbock. The council does not do that, I do not do that, it comes from the Lubbock Central Appraisal District. The whole purpose of these tax calculations that are in the middle of that page, you have to take, take your new property, forget about it for a minute. You're only working on same property this year from the same property last year. When your property goes up per the appraisal district, and I know a lot of residential went up ten, and that's the maximum limit for homestead residential, when all those go up, your no new revenue rate is a mathematical product to make your revenue the exact same as it was year over year. In other words, if we adopted a no new revenue rate every year, the only change in your revenue will be the new property that is added each year. So for everybody that's listening, and we see, you know, the, the tax bills come in, and hey, my appraisal went up by ten percent, it did, we can't raise your taxes to that, and we don't. We have to start back as if it were zero. That's why these rates get smaller each year on the no new revenue rate. That is why, even though your rate is lower in my proposed budget than it is in this year's budget, it's still going to get a little bit extra money, a little more money than we had the year before, but it's because we've had to go back to zero to offset that appraised value. It's a system that's more complicated than it probably should be, but it is designed to force us and all other taxing entities to take out the appraisal growth before we start a budget. And that part of it's a good thing. It's how we get there that's confusing.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. See everybody's eyes rolling back. Where is the first break? Give me a couple more, maybe then.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to your seven million, five-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, this is the additional revenue. Where does it go? Five-point, call it five-point-eight goes into maintenance and operations, one-point-eight goes into debt. Again, that debt is the INS, that is a mathematical calculation. Set that one off to the side, look at M and O. That is what your increase is. And of that, two-point-five is from new property, three-point-two is on existing property. I'll show the direct impact in just a sec. The over sixty-five, again, we mentioned that a minute ago, it also has to get split between those categories. So seven-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand of that new piece of the over sixty-five went to M and O, three-hundred-and-sixty-one of it went to the new property. But again, if you're in that over sixty-five exemption, your, what you paid didn't change. This is all stuff that's new coming into it. What does that mean to a home? So here's the actual impact therein. At the forty-seven point seven cents, the average single-family home will see a forty-seven dollar and two cent increase in their property taxes. That looks like this. For your current year, the average home, which was two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars, would have paid one-thousand-and-twenty-one dollars and forty cents. For the new year, the average increase trickles out to be five-point-two percent. Big change, meaning the average single-family home went up to two-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, from two-eleven to two-twenty-two. Your city of Lubbock taxes, the way the budget is built right now, would go to one-thousand-and-sixty-one dollars and forty-one cents. That's a forty-seven dollar and two penny increase. Fifty-three dollars of that is because of appraisal growth, but because the M and O rate is lower than it was the year before, you subtract six dollars and fourteen cents. All that is fancy math to say the impact is forty-seven dollars and two cents on the average home. If your house is worth two times the average, your bill is two times. If it's worth one-half, your bill is one-half. Questions on the impact? Some things that we need to look at on that. So the actual revenue increase over what would have been your no new revenue rate in the maintenance and operations is two-point-four-five-nine million dollars. Some things that are in this budget that were not in last year's budget. We're adding five police officers and a public safety officer. We've increased street maintenance by an additional million. A division chief at the fire department, a little over two-point-one million for the new breathing packs and personal protective equipment at fire, and this is the year that we have to pick up the streetlight costs. Lubbock, for a hundred years, has enjoyed the benefit of a vertically integrated electric utility. They had the streetlights. Lubbock Power and Light no longer can do that, and they don't have electricity to provide to those. So of the two-point-one million, roughly eight-hundred-thousand of that is the actual predicted electricity that will flow through the streetlights. The remainder of that is the carrying... The remainder of that is the carrying feeding of the streetlights by the LPNL crew. Now, you won't see this as a line item bill in this fashion. What you will see is a rate, just like you see at your home electricity, and I think that's gonna be around fourteen or fifteen cents per kilowatt hour. So those are things that we don't have in last year's budget that I do have in this year's budget. Collectively, that's six point four million dollars. I'm not adding raises or anything else into these numbers. These are just net new things that we have to do this year. And I thought you might find it interesting, the illustration between your revenue from no new revenue or above no new revenue versus your new expense. Any questions on that?
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. So, to be clear, your proposed rate generates two point four million in additional revenue for the general fund.
Two point four million over the no new revenue rate.
And this list of expenses that you've included in your budget, six point four million, so again, math in public, you're approximately four million dollars upside down from last year's available monies due to these very important items. Items that we certainly can't find a good reason to not say we, we've got to have these things. So you found a way to cover four million dollars in additional expenses, and we haven't gotten to pay raises, and we haven't gotten to inflation or added fuel or anything at your four point seven, point four seven tax rate.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions before we take a break? I see this is a good place to take a break, right? None? Okay, let's take a fifteen-minute break. We'll be back at three forty-five. Okay, if everybody can take their seat, we'll get started here again. Get me back. Give me a heads up when she's coming this way. Okay, because we can, we can. Okay, if everybody, go ahead and get seated, we'll get started here. I'm gonna wait just a moment longer. Mr. Atkinson, why don't you go ahead and just set us up for this section? What fun are we gonna be having now?
We're gonna have mayor, new Trivial Pursuit category fund with debt and investments. I've been told by a very honored staff member that I'm putting them to sleep, so I'm going to attempt to do something different. I have no idea what it will be. Okay, we'll jump right in. Council, debt and investments, so slide that we present every year. Total governmental debt. This is not total outstanding debt. This is the governmental debt. Governmental debt is that portion that is paid out of your general fund and generally paid with taxes. So this is what this number is. Three hundred and thirty-nine million is where you see, excuse me, where you see Lubbock, and then you see the cities to both sides of us on that. Same information on a per capita basis. So Lubbock's per capita governmental debt is one thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. So what's non-governmental debt? Non-governmental debt is that that is being paid by rates or user fees. Here is your combined summary of all the outstanding debt, principal and interest for the city of Lubbock. Start at the top left for general government. You have the general fund, two hundred and ninety-nine million in the current year, three sixty-nine point eight in the new year. That is from your street bond. And in fact, I think in my entire time here, that's the first time that's gone up. It's also the first time we've got a street bond. Enterprise fund, the civic center had debt a number of years ago that was issued through the general fund. Three million outstanding current year, two point six million outstanding in the new year, goes down by four hundred and fifty-three thousand. Coming underneath, you have solid waste. It is listed as general government because it is in your general fund, but the solid waste debt is paid out of the solid waste rate. So we show that to you so you can see it separately. Thirty-one point four to fifty-eight point one. There are two main changes in that. Dollars that are coming online for the transfer station and some of the tax notes for some of the large, big, expensive equipment. Underneath that, you go to the water wastewater fund. I'll just skip to the change part of these. Water and wastewater has paid down by fifty-nine and a half million year over year. Stormwater is up three point nine. This is that massive project that's going on behind the Blue Sky Restaurant, where we are taking that playa and making it to drain into Lake One. And of course, ultimately, that takes the water to Lake Seven. That's the last of the big playas that we need to set up on a system to let them drain rather than overflow out into the streets. Fun fact, the Blue, Blue Sky Playa drains the vast majority of the Texas Tech campus as well. So a lot of water comes into that one. Airport is next. Airport paying down by four point three. City bus, four hundred thousand. There's a small outstanding obligation at your civic, uh, se, excuse me, cemetery, down by forty-six thousand. You see Lubbock Power and Light with an increase of fifty-two point eight, and your internal funds of one point five. Special revenue funds, we talked just a little bit about Gateway, and I think I made the comment, Gateway is primarily a debt service fund. It is. That was what it was designed to do. Us being able to use it for maintenance in addition to new projects is a new thing for us. But Gateway paying off eight point seven million year over year. Your special revenue funds down by four million. Couple of those do have a, a debt associated with them. They are paid by revenue from those special revenues, not by your general dollars. So year over year, you see that we're going from one point seven million in the, um, billion, one point seven billion in the current year to one point eight billion in the new year, or a net change of seventy-eight million. So that takes into account all of the pluses and all of the minuses to get there. Let's look at it this way. We're gonna go back to the governmental part of the debt, the three hundred and seventy-two million outstanding. Where does that debt go? To what benefit was it used? Biggest part of that is streets, and then you see it carry down through the rest of that across the parts of the chart there. Any questions on that? The Lubbock Fire Rescue one is predominantly Station Twenty, as well as some of the tax notes.
Dr. Bussell?
Mr. Atkinson, just back to that previous, the comparison slide, the fifty-two million, that's LPNL, what is that debt coming on for this year?
I don't know. We will have LPNL here tomorrow. I cannot call it, I'm sorry.
Okay. If you'll remind me, that way I can ask tomorrow.
We'll make a note.
Okay.
And I, I don't think they're here. We've got a note. We'll pull that tomorrow.
Any other questions? Mr. Collins?
On your total government debt comparison on page forty-three, is this comparing general fund debt or all, all debt? All city debt? And I'm, and I'm just looking at some-
General fund only.
General fund only. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's jump to the debt profile, and I'll, I'll point out a change here. This is your total debt by fund. So this is the earlier table laid out a different way. The, the pie charts are kind of the interesting thing here. So out of that total outstanding debt for the city of Lubbock, all of it, all in, principal and interest, seventy-six point seven percent of that outstanding debt is paid by rates and fees. Twenty-three point three percent is paid out of your taxes. If you had looked at this last year, it was exactly eighty, twenty. The real change is rolling on the street bond plus the one additional issuance that LPNL's got. Then the pie chart to the right breaks it down into the individual departments. The biggest part of water wastewater is Lake Allen Henry.
Mr. Rose?
Do we have info on what's gonna be rolling off in the next five to ten years in terms of debt?
We, we can print you an act, an actual debt profile of all of it.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll get that. A lot of the water wastewater starts falling off around twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Mr. Rose?
Can you remind me when we took that debt on for Allen Henry?
It came on in a sequence, I believe, of three. You had the lake, then you had the pipelines, and then you had the big treatment plant, but we'll, we'll get you that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, here are your investment earnings. The light green color are actual dollars, the blues are your projected, so obviously we're not finished with this year, nor do we have next year's. The blue wiggly chart or wiggly line on there, that is our actual yields or predicted yields, and the yellow is the benchmark. You see that for quite a while, we've been able to beat the benchmark on your investment earnings. And the, the dollars that are invested are generally going to be those dollars that are held in those reserve funds. Plus, if you issue a bond that's going to take multiple years to pay out, you can take a small piece of that in the early years and earn, but you cannot create arbitrage, which in years past, it was impossible because of the low rates. Now, we have to be very careful about that. Okay. Mayor, with that, we have kind of finished all the big, high-level stuff, and we're ready to move into the departmental. I think it'll go a little quicker, but would offer for the council, if there's any questions on what we have done up to this point, if there's any things you want us to go pull information and have back ready for you tomorrow, let us know. So, Mayor, I'll turn it over to you for questions, and then we can move on.
So do any council members have any questions at this point in the presentation that you need answered? Or any information you want Mr. Atkinson to bring back to you? All right.
Sounds like we're ready for departmental. Thank you. Okay. So back as a reminder, here is your general fund overview. This is all in. Again, it's a three hundred and ten point three million dollar proposed budget for the general fund. The top are your revenue sources, and then the bottom are the changes in those revenue sources. Same information, but on the expense side, and again, in the general fund, it's exactly balanced. Three hundred and ten in revenue, three hundred and ten in expenses. Again, no surprise, your largest expenditure category is going to be public safety, and then you see how the others have changed over the last three years as well, next to them. Okay. Now on to the departments themselves. We will start with the city attorney's department. All of these slides are going to be laid out the same, and then the notes that we have put on them, where we've tried to pick out, you know, your major changes in here. This is the city attorney's operating budget in total. It is a change from two point five four million to two point six two million. It's about a three point one percent. Compensation is up, certainly due to the raises, but also due to some staffing changes. There is a benefit increase cost due to TMRS, Texas Municipal Retirement System. That is the pension under which all city employees other than fire are covered. Social Security, the health premiums, workers' compensation, slight increase in professional services. This is due to litigation and appellate cases. Scheduled charges are going up for liability insurance, offset by a decrease in their IT charges. When you hear us talk about all these different insurances, you have property insurance, liability insurance, all of those, every year, those are repriced. In fact, council member, you see those usually in April. Those are repriced and evaluated on a department to by department basis, so they're not just a strict allocation on the number of employees, for example, because some departments have a higher risk profile than others. City Attorney has a very low risk profile. Questions on City Attorney? How about the city council budget? So year over year, it's less than a one percent change, so from five ninety-nine eight to six hundred and four seven, really the change in this one, you're going to pick it up in the benefits line item. Slight increase for the supplies, and then the scheduled charges are going up for IT. There's a little bit of an offset due to the telephone charges going downward.
Mr. Atkinson, for the benefit of everyone, including me, because you answered this question earlier, explain what scheduled charges are and how those are funded or assessed.
You bet. Earlier today, we looked at a budget for internal services. So those are city departments who provide some specialized service to other city departments, not to the outside world. IT's the biggest and the most obvious. The risk department, so that's how the insurance plans all roll out and get allocated. Not in the general fund, but in enterprises, there's an indirect cost. In the case of IT, I think it's a good example. IT charges are literally down to the number of devices a department has connected to the network, and then the unique software packages that they operate and a divided cost for the standard software like Outlook, like Excel, Word, those types of things.
So in essence, every department bears its share-
Correct.
-of those internal charges.
Mm-hmm. That is correct.
Based on different criteria, but in IT, it's number of devices. It might be insurance, number of people.
Insurance is largely gonna be number of people and then the type of activity. You'll see the same analysis for workers' compensation.
Thank you.
Okay. Jumping over to the city manager's budget, have a one point one percent increase in this budget. The largest category of change is going to be, again, in those benefit costs. And then professional services is going up slightly, mainly due to supporting various boards and commissions. And then we've got a decrease in the other charges, and that was a prior budget year error, and then we've got a increase in funding for special projects. Scheduled charges increase is related to liability insurance, but we did have an IT decrease in ours mainly due to fewer devices. Fewer devices and one fewer person. City secretary, Ms. Paz is bringing you a significant decrease in her budget. Before we get all excited, that's mainly due to not budgeting- Before we get all excited, that's mainly due to not budgeting for the second election in the same fiscal year. So that is where that... And in fact, in City Secretary, you will see her budget go up and down. She runs a very tight budget. Generally, that will be associated with election expenses. There are proposed fee changes brought to you by the City Secretary's office. You can see those on this slide. A five-dollar change for transfer ambulance inspections, those are existing licensed ambulances, not your nine-one-one ambulances, the transfer ambulances. An increase of twenty-five dollars in the application fee for a new transfer ambulance, and then they have a substitute or re-inspect fee. The tow truck permits up by five dollars, and a hundred-dollar requested increase in the mobile billboards. Let's go to facilities, and I'm going to try to roll through these, so stop me at any point. So facilities does have a six percent increase. It's about three-hundred thousand dollars. Some is due to staffing changes. We now have education incentive pay in this department. Mr. Zavikar and his crew have done a great job to build a crew and to start making that crew better. Need to reward them for that. TMRS rate, medical premium, workers' comp is what is affecting the benefits line item. Supplies is due to office, educational supplies, uniforms, and small tools. We are increasing the maintenance lines significantly. This is important to take care of our buildings. We're sitting in a new building here, but a lot of our buildings are not, so they take care of your HVAC, plumbing, all of those things in those buildings. The other charges, slightly increased, slight increase in rent, larger increase in communications. Rent is their warehouse, and if you haven't been by there, that's over on Thirty-Fourth Street, just east of the interstate. You see the change in scheduled charges. It's just under one full percentage point. In real numbers, it's about thirteen thousand bucks. And then the capital outlay, I'm asking to buy them a snowplow. This is a small snowplow to go on one of the trucks, because we have not yet found a good way to take care of snow in the parking garage, and we think that's going to be the best way to do that. We have tried it with little stuff. We have tried it with rented sweepers. Just don't have a good way to do that. Yet the alternative is to acquire a skid loader at a much, much larger cost, and it just will not get used. So this is a plow to go on an existing pickup.
Mayor Potem.
It's the attachment.
It is just the plow and the attachment to bolt onto an existing truck that we have, a pickup. This is not one of the big ones you will see out on the street. I wished I could buy a plow truck for that, but I can't. Finance. Finance is of course Cheryl and her crew. It's also your accounting department, your purchasing department, risk. So it's a lot of people. Total change in their budget is two-tenths of one percent. We did eliminate an open buyer's position in the purchasing department. Were able to decrease part-time and overtime and temporary pay. Other than the purchasing department, these departments are staffed, they're stable, they've got really good people, so those other costs, we can take them out. Benefits, and this is going to be a broken record, you're going to see TMRS, medical premiums, workers' comp in almost every department at some level. Slight increase in supplies, just a hair over one thousand dollars. Professional services is up, it's ten thousand dollars, but again, that is spread across all of those departments we named. The scheduled charges, liability insurance and postage, they're also getting a slight decrease in IT and in telephone. Human Resources, move over here. You have a six percent, six-point-one percent change, that's one-point-two-four million to one-point-three-two million. Compensation and benefits are due to the staffing changes, TMRS, health premiums, et cetera. Supplies, that is educational material for HR to use with themselves first and then with staff. We are increasing the professional services budget for training, but really for advertising and promotions. This is the front door to the city when we're talking about employees. Ms. Laura and her crew have really come a long way in a short period of time, and we're going to keep doing it. Other charges are able to be decreased slightly. We had some one-time purchases in prior years. Communications down a little bit. They've already bought new furniture, they don't need more. You see the scheduled charges and another line item that was for office furniture. So questions for human resources? Internal audit. The big savings here, we had a vacant internal auditor position. We are not eliminating the internal audit department. Please, please don't take that. That has been kind of a revolving door. We've had trouble hiring and keeping people as the internal auditor. So what Brooke and her team have done is taken the existing positions and reorganized them, recategorize them. We've been doing that now for about six months. It seems to be working well. I think over time, I will want to start adding back positions to this. I don't need it now. And I don't know that when we add back, it will be the literal auditor. It may be the audit specialist positions that we add back. This group is who reports to your Audit and Investment Committee. The non-departmental budget, this is Ms. Brock's favorite budget. Compensation, she says decreasing, it's actually being eliminated. There is no budgeted human that fits into here. We have a little bit of workers' comp that carries over, and then it'll wipe out. Professional services line item and the scheduled charges, let me talk about those. Professional services is where you pay the LCAD bill, Lubbock Central Appraisal District. We get billed for their services. So we've got a slight decrease, not in their budget, but in how it was programmed in the prior year. We have the... P-CORI is the outcome... Yeah, I can't call it out. It is a federal mandate that we have to do related to the health plan, and we cannot pay it out of anything other than general fund dollars. So it has to be scheduled here. It's not one of those scheduled charges I can spread across the rest of the city. I've got to get it out of here. So that is also in your professional services. The scheduled charges, if you'll notice, those have been extremely minimal. You now see two-point-one-four-three million. Two-point-one of that is your streetlights. They belong to the general fund, not to a department, so that's why they're here. In fact, if you'll take that out, that's, that is what your change is. Communications and public engagement. The changes are catching up for changes, the compensation and benefit changes are catching up for changes made in the current year. Some employee reclasses, TMRS, workers' comp. Supplies are really, I mean, they're increasing, but it's just about four hundred dollars. That's office supplies and fuel. Maintenance, that is the fleet charge for the two vehicles that are assigned to them. Professional services is up a little bit. This is where we pay for all of the social media tools that we have, the analytics, those types of items. The scheduled charges, that is going to be your IT, your liability insurance, and the telephone charges. Telephone charges, almost across the board, went down this year, which is good. And compared to seven years ago, they are way down because we don't use telephones as much as we used to. We just really don't. Building Safety, so this is the group where you get your building permits. This is where the inspections are done. They have a very slight decrease in the overall budget through here. You can see the various line items. There's not a single line item with a huge change in it, so taking us from three-point-zero-seven million to three-point-zero-two. One thing I like, if you see their capital outlay decrease, the tax notes that were assigned to that department are paid off. There's no more there. Here are the proposed fee changes brought to you by Building Safety. Probably the best way to look at these, there's a couple of pages worth. Look over on the far right-hand column, which is the dollar change from the prior budget. So on residential, it's four cents per square foot for new, for the addition, and for the remodel. Twenty-five dollar change, and this is the minimum on the building permit. So the only one that's going to pay that is the one that hits into the minimum category. You see the investigative inspection fee. The re-inspections, that's really where things kind of get hard on us, because we've been there once for a prior fee and something wasn't right, now we have to go back to it. We were able about two years ago to put those, really adjust the re-inspection fees in the Fire Marshal's Office, and it helped a bunch. They didn't have to do as many re-inspections, and it would be my preference that we don't have to do re-inspections. So you see those, change in the demolition permit. I won't read them all, but you'll see a common theme with those re-inspections. Moving over to the next page, this is where you're now picking up your trade permits, plumbing, mechanical, and then we actually have a ten-dollar decrease in the contractor registration fee. Questions about any of those before we go to codes? Okay. Code enforcement? You see a three percent change in code enforcement. Compensation is going down a little bit because part-time pay, we're able to take down. Again, pretty much fully staffed, they're doing great. Supplies are up because of fuel, because we're fully staffed and people are out working and doing their jobs. Professional services will go down slightly due to the cost of the liens, the mowing and the demolition liens. Other charges is going up somewhat significantly. That is the cost we have to pay if a property owner will not go and take care of those weeds. Our contractors have raised their prices to us, and we've got to fund that. You recover that through those liens that are mentioned earlier. Questions? Environmental Health and Vector, Vector Control, that is mosquitoes. So these are two groups that operate under one department. Mr. Stephen Walker's here today. He does a great job with that group. Change from two-point-zero-one-eight million to two-point-zero-five-seven, just under a two percent increase. We have had to add a contracted entomologist to help them. This is on the Vector side, not on the environmental health side. And remember, in Vector, we do the entire county. So there is a revenue line item for a payment that comes to us from Lubbock County. But Stephen's team is taking care of all of the city, plus the unincorporated parts of Lubbock County. We don't go into Wolfherth and Idaloo and Ransom and those, but if it's unincorporated, it's his people out doing that work. The other charge for Vector software, that is, it's basically an accountability software that lets them track where they're working and keep up with that. Here are the proposed fee changes out of environmental health in Vector. These are actually all out of environmental health. You see the food manufacturing warehouse is greater than ten thousand square feet, and then it carries down based on the risk category as far as what they pay. We are asking for a twenty-five dollar increase in the swimming pool permit. Those are public swimming pools. We don't inspect the backyard pools. The grease facilities, the grease haulers, the fancy standalone interactive water feature, which the City of Lubbock is now the proud owner of three of those. They've been very busy since we opened them. And then the replacement no smoking signs up by two dollars. That number hasn't changed in a very, very long time. Planning Department, one-point-one-six to one-point-one-nine, a three percent change there. Education incentive pay, we have got the largest number of licensed and certified planners I think we've ever had, certainly at least in my tenure here. You see the various other changes. The other charges, the increase that you see there, that is a one-time charge to update the software that allows our customers to manage their way through the UDC. So we're getting a new platform to do that. Planning, we are asking to remove a fee. So this is the initial fee for a group home permit. That has been on our books for a long time. Not going to go into a lot of detail, but that's basically something that we can't require. So I think the best thing to do is just eliminate that and get it out of the way. Library Budget, current year four-point-three-six, proposed year four-point-four-one, a one-point-one percent increase. We have a slight compensation decrease, a little bit of a benefit increase, again, due to the same thing. Bit of an increase in the office supplies, little more money for their fleet and for their building maintenance comes out there, you can see it. The professional services has an increase in it, that is for additional security coverage at Mahon. That's the only library that we staff with security. It has helped a bunch, but we need to extend it to cover all the hours that they are open. The other charges accounts for the potential go-to-key renewal. The scheduled charges are going down a little bit on them. And then capital outlay, that's circulation. Circulation means books, magazines, and items such as that. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Collins.
You, I just wanted to, you said it, but I wanted to be very clear. You have budgeted a renewal for go-to-key branch.
We have.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for museums? Okay, museum budget all over, and these are the two city museums, so it's the Buddy Holly Museum and the Silent Wings Museum. We're decreasing compensation and benefits because our marketing and event coordinators' salary are partially eligible for hot tax. So we're not eliminating that cost. That piece of that salary is going over and be funded by the hot tax. Doing this does not reduce or minimize the council's ability as you allocate your big hot tax dollars. Because of the change in how you started allocating hot tax in the current year, where you allocate a dollar to match a budget, you don't do those true-ups anymore. We've just done one recently, but it was from the year prior. Thus, when you have additional hot tax revenue, it starts to build, and it builds into a fund that is only accessible by the council. You have that, that's one portion. The second portion of it is there is an increase in the hot tax revenue projected for next year that is greater than what's been requested of the hot tax. So council, you can take this portion of that salary and pay it out of hot tax, and it does not change your ability to do any of the other things with hot tax either that you've always done or that you might want to do in the future. And you'll see a couple of those trigger out also in another department in a minute, but that is a change, so if there's any questions, this would be a good place for that. You'll also see that on the professional services line item, because the marketing and advertising is also eligible for hot. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Collins.
So you are telling us that there could be some accumulation of hot tax funds year over year that would be at the discretion of the council to use for hot tax eligible expenses?
Correct.
And that's a limited use, but they would be at the council's discretion?
That is correct.
Do you have anticipation? Any idea what that number is?
We budged, I'm sorry, I always forget that. We budged in quite a bit this year, but it's coming in fairly well, I think, so essentially, it's hard to tell, because you can't really, I don't have a crystal ball, but I think it's going to come in a little over, maybe a hundred thousand or two.
So I'll start the guessing on that. We'll show you some budgets in a little bit. Humor me that these are guesses. The projected increase year-over-year in hot tax revenue is about three-hundred thousand dollars. Probably a little low, but about three-hundred thousand dollars. We're predicting about another hundred this year that in the past would have gone out through a true-up, that instead you will save. And then we have monies from in the past where the city allocations of hot, which are basically Civic Center, a little bit of the Buddy Holly- basically Civic Center, a little bit of the Buddy Holly Museum, we never did true those up to our benefit like we have done to our outside partners, and for some reason, three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars sticks in my head on that one.
That's correct, how much we have in the fund.
Right. So, you add those together, that's going into that fund minus whatever you take out, in this case, for your marketing coordinator and some of your marketing expenses.
Thank you.
Mr. Gashin?
How mu, how much more of the museum budget could be supported by the hot revenue?
Thank, thank you for asking. We started on this about three weeks ago. I don't know that there's much more yet that we can push. If there is, it's going to be literally just a couple of thousand here and a couple of thousand there. There, there's limits to how much of it you're allowed to offset. You'll see some bigger numbers, councilman, when we get over to the Parks Department because it's not in the arts category. The arts category, and I know I've talked to several of you in the past, and I told all of y'all that there was a minimum you had to give to one, and I was wrong, that's changed. There is now not that minimum, there is a maximum that you can apply against the arts, and that maximum is fifteen percent of your total revenue. So, when you take the outside stuff, plus what we're trying to do here, we're gonna start bumping up against the fifteen. Current budget in parks is thirteen and a half million, proposed budget is thirteen-point-eight, so this is a two-and-a-half percent increase. You do see the compensation and benefits going down by a pretty significant number. We can allocate the cost of our two senior grounds workers and our assistant athletic foreman to the hot tax. The reason being, their dedicated work is at the Burl Huffman complex and at the Tom Martin complex. Those are your two tournament complexes, and that is a directly allowed category of expenditure under hot that we have not done before. So, that's, that's gonna help us quite a bit. There are increases in the benefits, again, they're the same as in the other. We have a small decrease in the small tools, botanical supplies, closing clap pool, there was a portion of clap pool still in this budget, budget was written before we knew we had to close it. We do have some fleet maintenance and some lawn maintenance expenses going up. Professional services has a significant increase in it. In this case, that is the third-party mowing contracts that is driving that. The majority of your parks are mowed by third parties. We do, we mow some, and we're trying to mow more of them each year, but we can't get to all of them, and that's, that's where that's hitting you. Scheduled charges are up a bit, not significantly, but a little, for property liability insurance. Electric costs appear to be going down, you'll see that in a few other departments. And then their tax note payments have gone down significantly, plus we've taken out one-time capital.
Mayor, put him.
Just for the public's sake, you mentioned clap park closure, that is temporary, and we should, once we do all the maintenance, that'll be reopening next summer. Is that correct?
Yeah, the capital project that we've discussed for clap will be later today, it's in there.
Okay.
Parks and Recreation, some proposed fee changes, and I might maybe pause just here a little bit. I believe it was Councilman Gashin that mentioned during her priorities workshop, you know, a discussion about how do we set fees? Parks is a great example to where the fees over the years, and I'm talking about to our original records, which was the two-thousand-and-four budget year, those fees were just not kept up at all. So, if we talk about fees in general internally, and I'll provide it for you tomorrow, we, we have a fee policy that we can look at that decides what's a range of cost recovery for a fee. An easy one to start with on a hundred percent would be water taps. So, a water tap by definition can only benefit the property that needs the water tap. The benefit doesn't extend to the left or the right. So, full cost recovery makes a lot of sense when it's a unique individual benefit. It's not quite as easy when you look at other things. Building permit fees are pretty close to cost recovery, and of course, a building permit's a pretty unique benefit. Me getting a new house doesn't help the house, you know, to either side of me. Parks are a little bit more challenging, you know, what is the purpose of a public park and the facilities within? It's to provide opportunities either at no cost or at a low cost to people. So, those fees maybe should be more down in the thirty percent of cost recovery. If we can get to where we look at the fee policy and consider adopting those recovery rates, once we get all our fees kinda reset, changing them over time is merely a function of changing the increase in the cost. Parks is the best example, the one, we've never done that. These have sat still. Those of you that were here for your last budget will remember, rather than adjusting park fees upwards, we eliminated a bunch of fees. The fees that were established twenty years ago were so prescriptive, and I'm sure they were done to get people the lowest cost rental possible, but you could rent one of our rooms, like at the Garden and Art Center, for example, and that had a small fee. But if you wanted tables, you could get two tables, one table, five tables, or no tables, right down to the number of chairs, and the chairs were twenty-five cents each. It cost more than twenty-five cents to charge you a fee, much less the effort it takes to set out a chair, pick up a chair, and put a chair back up. So, we eliminated a bunch of them. We've got them cleaned out, but we are still set, in not all cases, but a lot of them, on really a twenty-year basis. So, these are starting to look like they're bigger numbers, but if you consider they have not moved for a very long period of time, and I really don't think that they are. So, we've got food truck permit fees for, under the community recreation line item, one-time fee that covers a whole year, or one-time fee for a deal. We're asking only to change that by twenty-five dollars. You have your vendor commission, so if you are selling for-profit items in a public park, you owe the city a commission. We're asking to change that. And you see special vendors, parking setup, parking only, we have a lot of events that we do that, and so that's a direct cost for us, it's a benefit to the event, not full cost recovery, but, but some of it. You see the various outdoor recreation fees, the field rentals, we have been very static in that, so you see some changes in it. The resident paid-on-time, non-resident paid-on-time fees, these are all associated with other recreation. Tennis fees have not adjusted, you're about to have your pickleball courts to put into play. So, see the reservation fees for it. Our show wagon, and I think everybody may have seen that, that's the gigantic light trailer that when we unfold it, it's a stage, and we can do all kind of neat things with it. Almost all of that work is callback work, or it's overtime work to do that. Even at a hundred dollars, we're not anywhere close to covering the cost, but we're making a move, we're making a move in that direction. You see the, the equipment rental for trash cans for a temporary electric meter, that's much more difficult today than it was because while LPNL can set up a temporary pole, they can't provide the electricity for it. We have to cover that through our contract with electricity. We are removing, for the time being, the various fees associated with the lifeguard training. We don't actually have a cornhole league anymore, so we don't need that, and then all the way down through there. So, you've got several over here that are increases. We have proposed decreases predominantly here, and that'll take care of the parks.
Give you, oh. Dr. Wilson?
Quick question, Jared, on the food truck permits, is this just for them to be at like a city park facility, like if they're at Tom Martin or Burl Huffman, or is this annually for them to be anywhere?
I believe it is event related to specific sites. Colby's in the audience, we'll get him to give you the right answer.
It's per, per event for us.
But, so, so just if they're at a park event, so, and I just wanna clarify, so they can either choose to pay two-fifty for the whole year, or they have to pay a hundred-and-twenty-five per event, or they have to pay two-fifty for a year and a hundred-and-twenty-five per event?
Two-fifty.
Sorry, Colby.
Colby, you're on, that mic's on.
So, if they're gonna do events that we run, that we run throughout the year, they can pay the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and they're eligible to go to any of our events that we ask them to go to or invite them in that sense. If we're doing one-time type of, type of events, it would be for that one-time charge.
Okay, so it's not, it's not both, it's just they can choose to pay for a year and then, okay, and this is just for city park function?
Correct, correct.
Do they pay additional fees, Jared, to just be in the city? Don't they pay like environmental fees and stuff, like to be licensed and permitted in the city?
There's food truck licensing, and it's really just for the food safety now, we have trimmed that one down.
Okay, that's awesome, thank you.
And that, that actually would go back to the environmental health stuff, so.
Mayor, put him.
Colby, you might wanna come back, I'm sorry, I'm. I have a couple of questions, and one of them is the field rental professional services. Are, are we talking about like the Lubbock Youth Football League? Would that be an, an increased fee per field?
No, those are, those are, for, for example, that we have a, a tournament out at the Tom Martin complex, and, and, or, we would schedule with the, the tournament director the different times that we may come out and, and re-chalk a field or do something like that. If they, if they're running the event, we're not stationed out there the entire time, if we're out there and they call us back for something that's not in the contract or what we agreed upon, that's when this fee would come in play. So, they brought my, my, my athletic foreman out, out to redo a, a field or something, we would charge that fee of them coming back out and it's overtime.
And then you also, what is the Trejo after-school program, we saw, we're seeing a reduction? It's a fifteen-dollar fee reduction?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fee that was left over from before, we still do some of those other things, we just don't charge in the same means for that, and so there's activities that go on, but they're, they're program-based, and so it's, it's one, if you wanted to sign up for an art class, you pay for just that art class or why not. So, we really got out of the mold of having the full-fledged after-school program.
And, I mean, I see decreases all over the place, so that's a really good thing. I, I know we were seeing some increases, but the maintenance of things and the staff time, I think, you know, it's justifiable.
Thank you.
But, that's all I have on that.
You might stay there.
Col, Colby.
I'll, I'll tell you when you can leave, okay?
All righty, thank you, sir.
I see no more questions. So, um, okay, well, I was, I was gonna ask him a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, all these league rental, field rental, you know, that went away, what was the thinking behind that? That's.
I, I think the city manager explained it, well, we went with the accounting department, and we, my assistant director and our recreation superintendent started looking at all of our fees, and, and really at, at what are the things that we are charging for that we need to get one-hundred percent cost recovery on? And, and so, the, the field rentals on there, just making sure that we're covering our, our, our costs. I'm sorry, I didn't answer that.
Like the field rental facility deposit at Burl Huffman was a thousand, it's nothing now.
I apologize, Mayor, can you switch that computer to page seventy-four?
Yes, yeah, I'm on page seventy-four, it's a little different than the field rentals on seventy-three.
So, the, those fees are like the, the throw-down basis, we've never used that, that fee in there. And, and so, when we go into a field rental deposits and stuff, we have, we, I'm trying to think of how, we, we rent that through a contract agreement with the, the facility. So, depending on how many fields they rent, will determine what those, those deposits are, but that's where it's covered in, instead of these fees. These were ones that we really didn't utilize, and so we were trying to get rid of them.
So, you, you get it, you get your income through contracts now?
Correct.
Okay, fine, thank you, Mr. Collins.
Colby, we see fees like thirty-five dollars is the proposed fee for, to rent a field at Burl Huffman, and, and we've got turf fields, and we've got artificial turf fields there, and, and so that's a uniform rental rate of thirty-five dollars, and, and that covers your costs, but does that provide any cost, any monies at all for refurbishment?
That's one of the things that Cheryl and I had the conversation on, in, when we were doing this budget, this fee analysis, is do we have the potential in next year's budget, as we do this again, to look at a capital replacement surcharge or something of that nature? Devin, gotten into any of the details of how that would work, but of, of looking at that to be able to say, like the turf at the soccer complex there, is how are we going to get back into being able to re, you know, when that, when we need to replace just the, the mat, can we do that without the full replace, the full, you know, project? But do we have funds built up to be able to, to do that? And so, in next year's budget, that is something we are gonna be looking at very closely, on how we can create that.
Does that, how much difference do you think there is? And I'm asking you to throw a dart, I know, but, I mean, at thirty-five dollars, you know, that turf was installed in sixteen, seventeen?
I think it was twenty-nineteen.
Nineteen?
It was right before I got here, in twenty-twenty.
Nineteen, so it's six years old, we've probably got, what, maybe five more years of useful life?
They're about an eight to ten years, yes, sir.
Yeah, so we're looking at a...
Now, we do, we have through the operating budget, we, we do put a, a refurbish that goes through it every year, and so we do, we are doing the maintenance on there, and so that's, that time scale can kind of slide, just depends on, on how much use that we've gotten. The first few years that we were here, we didn't have a lot of use in it, so it may extend it just a little bit.
Well, I, I'm, and I guess the point I'm getting to is at some point, we've really gotta look at what this replacement of turf fields may cost, not only at Burl Huffman, but I'm assuming that we're putting them in at Tom Martin as well.
Potentially, yes.
And so, we have got to have these fees allow for those replacement costs over that, over that ten-year period. I just, I don't know how much it's used, I don't know how many of thirty-five-dollar units you are able to collect each year. That seems like quite a bargain to me to get to rent a five-million-dollar field complex for thirty-five dollars a pop, but, you know, and, and I'm, I'm just, again, thinking out loud, and I apologize for that, but I, I just want us to make sure that we're thinking forward to this because that's gonna be a big expense, and, and at Burl Huffman, maybe we're only four to five years away.
Yes, sir, and it's something we were worried about, and so that's why one of the things we're looking at is, is how we get to there.
Okay, so, next year I'll be asking that question a little harder.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, and, and by the way, Mr. Collins, there's no problem ever thinking out loud up here, all right? That's what we all have to do, thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Thanks, Mayor, and just to kind of build on that, it's a good discussion. At thirty-five dollars for those field rentals, it is not covering the future cost of replacement. Those fields were built and paid for, I think they, they were put down in nineteen and opened in twenty, so we're in the first half of its life, but it's coming up. They were built and paid, they were bought and paid for out of hot tax money, where the majority of those dollars came. I think that is something we should look at. Remember, you're gonna build some level of reserve, we just don't know yet what it is, but I wouldn't suggest you'll be able to get all of it out of that hot, so you will have to look at fees, thirty-five dollars won't get you there. I can't tell you what does, but it's gonna be much, much more than that, and their challenge is to work on that over the course of this new year, come back to us.
Mayor, put him.
Have one more question for you, it's not really a question, I mean, I think we've seen it all through the city, the mowing, these companies that were working, they're increasing their fees, and you're, they're spread out, your staff's spread out, and so I noticed that we are seeing an increase. What, can you give us a little bit more of a background on that, and, and do you have any ideas to remedy that?
Yes, one of the issues that, that we, the department has faced is, is we have, we have multiple contracts for mowing our facilities or mowing city facilities and that, and, and so, one of the things that we're attempting is to try to get more efficient and better at what we do, to be able to expand to areas, tree care, some of those things that we're just not able to get to right now. And, and so, the thought behind was, okay, can we look at bringing all of our city parks mowing into one contract, all of our other facilities that we might mow into one contract, and, and then the cemetery into, into one contract, so we can stabilize that mowing. Right now, we get into cases, we've got ten different groups that we, that we manage, and so, group number eight may be on a, on a performance review that, that we've had a bad contractor that's been in it, because we do most of the time go up to the lowest bid, and so when we have issues with those contractors, we have to go through a vendor for performance. What that ends up doing is that delays the, the time period when our mowing, so we get behind our, and so it's just a domino effect. And so, what we're hoping is that we can bring this into a, a one or two contractors to mow all of these areas, take care of some of the small tree trimming and things to that nature, and that will in turn allow my department to start getting a little bit more specialized, and so now we can bring in some people to do a better job at landscaping, better job... better job at taking care of some of our trees in our parks. And it, it's just creating another step for our department to evolve.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I guess it might be towards Mr. Atkins there. I just have a question. I see that, uh, and I'm new to this, y'all. I see that you are like waiving the security deposits and stuff like that on certain events. Does that include community centers?
Not, not in this case. The, the fees that they're eliminating are unique to these particular listed items. This, this is not all the park fees.
Okay.
We're only putting the ones up here that are proposed for change.
All right, thank you.
And, and this will be a, a discussion probably after budget. When Colby talks about his recreational fields predominantly, it's going to be Burl Huffman, Tom Martin, and then the various Little League fields. Those are basically leased out. We call it an athletic field license agreement or AFLA. And those were updated very slightly about four years ago. It's probably time to look at them, you know, again, especially if we're able to improve those facilities. If we've got more to offer, we ought to look, you know, and see what we need to change in those. But as far as the fees being eliminated, security deposits only for the facilities listed on this page. The rest, no change.
All right, thank you.
I have one question, more question for you. So, and, and I've gotten this just from my district and the park in my district or that I used to represent where I live. There's no fee charged for soccer practices and stuff like that. They're just sort of ad hoc, they show up and they practice at a park. I get questions, I used to get questions quite a bit about the wear and tear on the turf in the park from the constant, you know, every day it seems like use of that park. But we don't charge for that at the moment, or do we?
We do not. And so a team can go out to any field that's open in our parks and they can, they can put down, you know, the little ball mark goals and, and practice. Uh, the only time that we would is if they truly wanted to rent the turf complex or they wanted to rent the Tom Martin field. Those would be the only times, our tournament facilities, those would be the ones that we have a use fee for. If you go to McKenzie and wanted to get on a ball field that was open, it's open all the time. You can go out there with your kiddo and just play. Thank you, sir.
Let's move on to engineering, slightly changing topics. Okay, engineering department, you will see a decrease, a significant decrease in this budget. So compensation and benefits, compensation is going down very slightly. Benefits up, benefits same reason. Bit of an increase in supplies. Maintenance increase is mainly due to the fleet maintenance program. And then we get into some bigger changes. So professional services increasing due to software maintenance and training. The city, for the first time in its history, we now have a complete asset management system. So we can track right down in most cases to a water valve. We can track street surfaces. We can track the length and the age and the size and the type of pipes. It's not something we've had in the past. We've spent the last three and a half years building that. A lot of that is centered through the engineering department. So that's a big part of what you're seeing on those increases there. We've got a little increase in the scheduled charges. Other charges actually are going down, just, are going up just very, very slightly. But all in, the big change is in the capital outlay and the reimbursements. And these are combined for your totals. But capital outlay is going down because the tax notes are going down. These are negative numbers, so as they go up, it's going down. This is an offset of expense. I have the same look every time we sit down and do this, but this really is a change. Um, so the tax notes, we've had a big payout. And then the reimbursements, that is our ability to charge Mr. Keenum and his staff and their effort. If it's on a specific project, it can be charged to that project, which also allows you to build and capture the total cost of a project. So in essence, a lot of the work that Mike and his team are doing on city projects, they are charging a department or a unique project for that effort, which offsets the general fund cost of having what he does. Does that make sense? The negative number on here is backwards. The bigger that number is, the more, more money you're saving. How about that?
Explain that one more time. The bigger the negative number?
The bigger the negative number, the more money you're saving. Think, look at it this way, that's a revenue.
It's a revenue.
Everything on that table is an expense, except for the last one, and it's a revenue. How about that?
It's a recapture of...
It's a reimbursement.
Yeah, reimbursement.
It's the, it's the equivalent of, we got a check for that level of effort.
Very good. I like that.
Proposed fee changes here. We have a 15 cent per Lenny her foot reduction in the cost of the plan review for curb and gutter. Mic's just that good. Right, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay, solid waste. Uh, you do see an increase here, and remember, I'm also asking for a dollar on the collection bill. Current budget is 26.67, the new budget 28.87. So you see your $2.2 million change in there. Compensation is up. The largest part of that is my request to add an assistant director to help Brenda to build some succession planning in there. Benefits line item, it's the same that we're seeing everywhere else. Supplies budget's going up because of chemical cost. Maintenance cost is the killer that we are facing right now. This is predominantly the repair cost to keep the trash trucks on the road while we're waiting for the new trash trucks to get here. Long-term, we are going to end up, number one, with a smaller fleet. Number two, because of the amount of replacements we're buying, whether we get them on time or not, with the amount we're buying, when we get to the point of reducing the size of that fleet, we're gonna have a much newer fleet. So that's going to turn in our favor, but it's still a couple of years out from being able to do that. So I'll offer a couple of comments maybe to kind of put into perspective what this means. We have available to us 71 of these automated trash trucks, the ones that pick a dumpster up. We have 71 of those. We need four days a week to have 50 or 51 of those trucks on the road. We generally can do that. It falls short every now and then. But we can generally do that, but it is coming at a cost to do that. There are over 29,000 dumpsters in Lubbock. And Brenda and her team pick each of those up two times every week. Then the trash trucks get on the highway and they go all the way to Abernathy and back. So that is going to change. It is killing us right now. It's just, it is what it is. Don't like it.
Mr. Rose.
Um, Jarrett, with the trash transfer station, are we expecting the useful life of some of these trash trucks to be heavily extended? Or, I mean, what are you thinking in terms of...
Great, great question, and I think, yes, you will see the useful life. You will also be able to spec your trucks to just go up and down the alleys. Today, you've either got to get them set up to go up and down the highway, where they spend a lot of time, or to go down the alley. But one spec doesn't work well in the other. When we have the transfer station and you're just hauling a few miles across town, the lifespan will go up, the total number of them we have to have will go down. And our over-the-road work will be with over-the-road semi trucks made to do that.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, what's him?
You know, I, I know that there's time for us to compliment our staff, but this is a great example of where Fleet has helped to really utilize trucks that aren't moving and utilizing parts just to sustain the services that we have. And this is a type of example that we're seeing all over the city. So I just want to thank staff because I know it takes a lot of thinking outside the box and, and sacrifices and, and I know there will be time for that. But I just wanted to say, because we're on this and, and I appreciate what Brenda and Fleet and all these other departments have done to help us to create that longevity to these old pieces of equipment.
Good, thank you. Um, my final note on this, if you look down to the capital line, capital outlay line, you see that going up significantly. That is for buying those giant fence sections that we have out at the landfill that we have to move around based on where we're working and where the wind's blowing. We have actually had some of those break in half in our windstorms this year.
Are we going back with the same company or manufacturer? Or do we have new fencing that's gonna withstand the wind better?
Well, the ones that were out there withstood it for a number of years before they finally broke. And the big challenge with those, um, some of them are, some of them are fixed, but some of them are movable. You've got to be able to move some of them around. So I, I think they're doing a good job with it. They're just, it's a rough place. And maybe on a nice, cool day, we can go out there and y'all can watch some of that equipment and see what it really is. It's a pretty impressive operation.
I'm gonna choose a day when it's 105 degrees. That's the day I'm gonna pick, so.
Mayor, what's your calendar look like tomorrow morning? Okay, to the next. Here's your fee changes for solid waste. We've already covered, uh, covered those earlier, but here's what they look like in detail. So the big one is the $1 change to the monthly pickup fee. And then you see how that ripples down through the commercials. And then you've got the $1, I'm sorry, the $1.75 at the West Texas Regional. That's the big one at Abernathy. That's the per ton for private haul. And then the special waste going up as well. How about streets? Okay, street department budget, uh, increasing from 5.7 million to 6.7 million. We do have a very slight decrease in compensation. That is really just due to a, to one particular staff turnover. Um, we had a very long-tenured gentleman that left us this year. The gentleman that took his place is out there in the audience and is doing a heck of a job for us as well. Supplies, our fuel cost has changed just a little bit, but not a whole lot. Maintenance increase, um, due to the fleet maintenance, but we've had a decrease in system maintenance. Um, and that was really adjusting it. We went in and adjusted it to actual spends, is what we have done. Scheduled charges, um, going up slightly for electric for liability. And then the capital outlay, this is for tax notes that are rolling on for them. And Cheryl, I believe it's for the street sweepers that came online? Yeah, I think it's for our street sweepers. Remember, your 14 and a half million in maintenance is outside of this. This is an operations budget. Okay? Traffic department. Um, this traffic engineering is what we commonly call it. It's the traffic management center you see up in this building, as well as all the field guys. Compensation is going down slightly because we did remove a vacant position. Um, love to give a shout-out to Mr. David Bragg that runs this. Again, for the first time in many, many years, other than this data technician, he has a fully-staffed department. This is also the department that manages all of your city-owned in-the-ground fiber network. It's in the ground and overhead both, but that's all run by David and his team. Little change in the benefits. Supplies are due to the fuel and that's largely due to, he's got all of his trucks out on the road working. Little increase to training and professional dues. Again, other than the one he had a full staff. And you see how the rest of it carries its way down. Overall, it's an increase from 4.4 to 4.56. Traffic, we are asking to remove two fees. The new loading zone permit fee and the existing loading zone permit fee. These are on-street loading zones. I think we're down two in the entire city. We don't need to mess with this.
Mr. Atkinson, I'm gonna say let's take another 10-minute break at this point.
Yes, sir.
All right, let's continue right along. I think we're making good progress.
Okay, we're gonna jump over to animal services now. Just under a 7% increase to the budget. 3.46 for the current year, 3.7 for the new year. We are adding two new customer service positions, um, whoop, sorry. As I noted earlier, tonight, um, that really is the point of contact for the public, trying to get help and to dispatch officers into the field. Same thing that you're gonna see in benefits. We do have an increase in supplies related to medical and to animals directly. Maintenance increase for the vehicle and for the building maintain, building maintenance. That's mainly in the building, even though we think that's a new facility, it is not. You go out there and look at it. Professional services are up, the cost for supporting our transport program and our community outreach program. The other charges, the change there, and it's a very slight change, is computer and communications. And then a bit of a decrease due to the insurance cost, the electric cost, and the telephone cost. So those are your proposed changes to animal services. We do have some fee changes we'd like to ask. Starting off with the euthanasia fee, um, $2 increase, 23 to 25. The next one is the owner surrender fee. These are for non-city residents. So we're asking to increase that from 60 to 75. This fee, not too many years ago, was no different than it was in the city when we started splitting them up. It appears that we do get fewer animals into our shelter that are not from the city. So also an increase in the city owner fee, but again, it's less than the county fee. Boarding fee for large livestock, please keep your horses at home. We have dogs, cats, all the rest. Impound fees on both going up. The rabies fee, this is a direct cost when we have to ship off the specimens to be tested. There's only one place to do it and there's only one way to get them there. So we need to keep those costs covered. And then a $25 increase in the dangerous animal license fee. So this is an animal that's been judged to be dangerous. The owner has chosen to keep it, subject to the requirements of the state law. We want to increase the fee for them to do so. Emergency management. Um, before I jump into this one, the change, the big change here, other than the budget...
Mr. Harris had a question.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harris had a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Atkins, the new kid on the block wanna ask, is there something that, that needs to be proposed pertaining to the animal shelter or dealing with the stray dogs and stuff like that? We add that to next year's budget?
I, I think the change, uh, council member Martinez Garcia, city attorney's office, Mr. Howerton, they're working on an update to the ordinance.
Okay.
And we'll need to get that in front of y'all. I don't know that it has a direct budgetary impact. Should just put a little more teeth. The, the real challenge with a lot of that is we're kind of limited by state law with what we can and cannot do, what kind of rules we can have and not have. And I've only had a chance to skim that ordinance. It appears to me that they've taken all of the slack out of it that we're allowed to take out of it, on a better way to say that, but, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll get with him and get it figured out. Thanks, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I'll get back to you.
Okay, back, back to emergency management. Um, so again, emergency management in Lubbock, Texas has, as far as I know, always belonged to the Lubbock Fire Department. The emergency management staff are not civil service. They are not firefighters. They are professional civilians. When we set out, started the budget this year, of course, Chief Ferguson had announced his retirement, but hadn't left. He and I visited. Um, y'all allowed me to make Chief Canest as our interim chief. We've continued that discussion. I've worked with Chief Herman at the police department. Short version of a long story. It is time to remove emergency management out from under... emergency management out from under either fire or police. So the proposal in this budget, and it doesn't change the dollars in any form, but the proposal is to take emergency management and have it report directly to my deputy city manager. So report to Mr. Howerton. Mr. Maudy, Mr. Maudy's predecessor, gentleman named Jay Parchman, they have really grown this program from not much to a program that really stands on the doorstep of being an accredited program. They've done a lot with it. For it to continue to keep doing that, it now needs to stand on its own. Basically, set it right in between police and fire, not above, not below, and move forward with that. So it is my intent to put it under the deputy city manager for that. Any questions on that before I get into their budget? Okay. So the budget itself does have a 4% increase. We really have a very, very slight increase in compensations, one-tenth to 1%. Your benefits costs are going up, as are the other ones. Supplies, we need to replace three platter heads. I believe that is for those gigantic printers where they're able to produce large-format documents for us when we need them. Little bit of a decrease in the maintenance cost, mainly due to radio shop. The professional services are up, and that's adding the cost for the controller system for all of our outdoor warning sirens. It says tornado sirens. Please don't call them that. They are outdoor warning sirens. They're not indoor warning. They're outdoors. And then carrying on down there, also an increase in their scheduled charges. Them, mainly due to telephones. For those of y'all that have had a chance to go out there, there are no shortages of ways to communicate from outside that EOC, and we need to keep them as such. Anything on emergency management?
Mayor Potem.
Quickly, do we pay for, I know it says the software required to operate city tornado sirens. How often do we need to update that software? Joe or Mr. Maudy, please?
So the software cost is just, it's a cloud-hosted software. It's updated anytime there's a firmware update. It does provide encryption for our siren system.
But do we have to pay fees every time we do the update, or is it just?
It's included in the annual subscription to the software.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving over to Lubbock Fire Rescue. You see change in the budget of 71.6 million in the current year to 71.09 or 71.1. Note that that is entirely due to the tax note payments at the fire department going down. It is not reducing their operating budget in any fashion. The reason the tax notes are going down for them, under Chief Canest's work, as we did Fire Station 20, and we looked at the buying schedule for the vehicles, the current budget year, we did not have to buy fire trucks. You have to buy two of them in this new budget that I have in front of you today, but collectively, that allowed that cost to go down. So when you look at that, the operating budget of the fire department's not going down. Tax note payments are going down. So back to the budget itself, compensation is up. Again, we've added one division chief position. Step pay increases across the board for our sworn personnel. Overtime is up. The benefits are going down. This is a little unusual, but it is entirely because of workers' compensation in this case. Everybody remembers the tragic event that we had. That spiked the workers' compensation cost, and that is now working itself back out. So that's what you see on benefits. One of the very few you'll see benefits go down. Supplies are decreasing, but again, it's because we have shifted over $2 million in capital. You'll see it later in today. That is for the personal protective equipment and the other items that they need. Radio charge has gone down slightly. Professional services is up. I completely and totally support this. A lot of that is related to moving to the in-house, full-in-house academies, which, if you'll recall, this was the first year of doing that. They signed up over 1,000 people to come and take that test. And if I remember, 30-some-odd positions is what they were competing for. So that group is actually out and working in the field today, and they're ready for when Station 20 opens. So good deal on that one. Other charges is going up. It's a very slight increase, but software updates and the computers we need for Fire Station 20. And then scheduled charge, IT is up and liability insurance is up.
Dr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Jared, so, and I may pull up Chief Canest to kind of explain this as well. So received and discussed a proposal with our Lubbock Firefighters Association, and they had asked for two division chiefs, and we had just provided the one. Can we maybe come up, Chief Canest or Mr. Wallace, and come explain to us why you needed two for this year?
Yeah, and while the chief's on the way up, I'll add this. That was also a request made by the chief. It completely matched and ended up in a funding question, but chief?
Yes, Mayor Council, thank you for bringing me up. So what is in the budget proposed to you today is for one division chief for our support services division. Currently, the deputy chief of support services has 15 direct reports and is also responsible for the majority of our large cost projects. As you see, the new apparatus that are in this year's budget that falls under the deputy chief of support services are facilities, both new construction and repair renovation, our large software projects, like our current CAT RMS project. All those are very big-ticket items that fall under there. And 15 direct reports, that span of control is lopsided, and this division chief will assist in mainstreaming that support services. Now, what you don't see before you, that was requested in budget, but as we have to set priorities for budgetary reasons, was also a division chief for our suppression. So currently, on suppression, which is the firefighters who are at the fire station who responds to emergencies, three shifts. Each shift is split up into thirds, so you take the whole city to split it into thirds. So each one of those shifts has a corresponding division chief that is responsible for that shift. We are at the size of our department now where we're looking to move to a shift commander role. So although that division chief is responsible for that shift, that operates on a 24-hour-on, 48-hour-off schedule, that division chief operates on an 8:00 to 5:00 schedule, meaning 16 hours during your Monday through Friday. They're really not there physically over that shift, and that includes then weekends, holidays. As you know, our operation is 24/7/365. So that model of having a shift commander allows that division chief, who is fully responsible for everything that goes on on that shift, to work that same 24/48-hour schedule. So the three that are currently in the office move to shift. Where that leaves us a hole in that model is now the deputy chief of operations gets into the same situation that the deputy chief of support services is currently in, and does not have that support on an 8:00 to 5:00 for all the projects that suppression goes through. So that was that expanded level request for two division chiefs, one where we don't have one in the support services, and then one on suppression side to fill in when those three that are there currently go on to shift to fill their role as shift commander.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate that. So, and Mr. Wallace, you can also come up and maybe explain to him too. So in the conversation where this was explained to me, it's not 100% within the cost of the two positions going to be new costs. For one reason that was explained to me, and please correct me if I'm wrong, was because the way the division chiefs are currently 8:00 to 5:00, they're essentially still having to cover 24/7. So if we have large events within the city, large fires, something happening, big overtime, people call in, things like that nature, these division chiefs are still being called in, and now we're having to pay overtime for them as well. And so if they went back out on shift, they'd be covering all shifts. And so some of that overtime would be eliminated to help cover these positions.
So our division chiefs, that is our hourly wage position, and they are earned overtime. And so if you think of, they're only working a 40-hour week, but their responsibilities are the entire time their shift is on duty. So absolutely, those responses, whether it's a specialist team response, multi-alarm response, an activation in the EOC, or anything that requires their attention, is now my highest hourly wage earner earning overtime, where if they are on a 24-hour schedule along with that shift, they are there for anything that occurs during that shift that requires their participation. And so it will reduce our overtime cost at that level, absolutely.
And I think Mr. Wallace explained it. Like, it's not 100% offset, but it does offset some of the costs of bringing in that new position. Is that correct, Ms. Wallace? It's not 100% coverage on the offset, but it does cover some. Is that correct?
That's correct. So for instance, tech football games, we have a staff member there, which is division chief, and this would take that 24/48 division chief to staff that instead of having to call back and paying overtime. We do several events like that. But yes, this does cover some of that cost that's associated with staffing things or answering emails or phone calls after hours.
So chief, if we aren't able to fund this second division chief, that would be the suppression division chief, would we be able to put the other division chiefs out on shift, or is that just going to leave us short in the administrative side?
No, we would continue to keep all three in their current position and not be able to move forward with this.
So we wouldn't be able to advance into the shift-level positions that you were asking for?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
The way y'all have this proposed here, will it cover things that the fire department needs, actually needs? Will it cover?
Yes, this allows us...
The way it's proposed now?
Yes, sir. So what's proposed right now is the one division chief for support services. What is not, for your consideration, is the one division chief for suppression. What is proposed now?
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Potem.
I think the combination of the activities that we're doing, plus the growth, is really extending all of our, these particular department, or this department. And so that's a little bit concerning because we know that their public safety is at the very top of a lot of the citizens' requests and lists. So I think it's definitely something that is worth looking over. So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Growth is the driving force behind this. When we had much fewer stations, we could do, but we have, with Fire Station 20 opening, we have grown to the point where that shift commander is really the norm.
Mr. Gleschin.
Are there any other budget requests that are not included in the presented budget that you would recommend?
So the other requests on the expanded level request are fire marshal's office, much of the same situation. So we have requested for three firefighters to fill a on-shift role, and the same thinking. Right now, all of your fire investigations, those are fire marshals who work an 8:00 to 5:00 schedule. They are called in now after hours on overtime to go and do those investigations. Also, if you think of capacity checks, say at bars or where there are large gatherings, those are also our fire marshals. And not only is it the cost of the overtime, but it's also the wear and tear on the personnel who are trying to have some sort of a 40-hour schedule, but repeatedly will work those hours after hours. It also allows, would allow us to increase our productivity. So on a full 24-hour schedule, those checks that will need to go on in the evenings, well, they are there at work, and that is part of their responsibilities, whether it's 10 o'clock at night or 10 o'clock in the morning. They are there working that shift, and they're responsible to do that. I'm not having to call someone in on overtime. It also increases productivity as they do construction inspections. And construction doesn't just stop on the weekends, especially as it gets to the latter part of the project, and they're trying to meet their deadline. They will go sometimes 24 hours a day. And it would be very helpful to those construction projects to be able to have those inspections done where right now they're not being done, where we're only scheduled in Monday through Friday between 8:00 to 5:00. It would give us the ability to do those inspections on non-traditional times.
So obviously, the second division chief operationally is very, very important. But as far as these three extra firefighters for our fire marshal's office, I can tell you my capacity as not only a firefighter, but you know, my role as president of the association and a citizen of Lubbock, I can tell you the three additional firefighter spots will make a direct impact on the public safety for our community. We have builders that are doing their best to try to get inspections done, and these guys are, they're staying busy. They're overran at times because growth in that department could be a little more expedited. These three positions will help with that. And, you know, they can do inspections at, you know, some opposite times, some different times than normal everyday hours, but we have some guys that are, they're putting in a lot of hours right now, and it's taking time away from their families. And this will definitely, definitely help them with their job is those three positions.
What is the estimated cost of adding the suppression chief position?
So currently, the salary is approximately $142,000. And then there is the benefits that will add up to it. If you look on your earlier slide for the support services division chief, will be the same, I believe it's approximately $189,000.
And then what is the estimated cost of adding the three additional firefighters to the fire marshal's office?
So firefighter salary approximately $60,000 annually, times three, and then the benefits on top of that. But all of the vehicles and computer equipment, we will take care of that with existing.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Wilson.
Chief, just off the top of your head, do you know how much fire department spends on overtime every year?
So we just increased our overtime request this year by 250,000. Let me get you the exact number.
About 4.56 is what's in the budget.
4.56 million.
Million.
In overtime.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Atkinson?
Sorry, answering the overtime question, we were able to look it up.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Dr. Wilson.
This is for you, Mr. Atkinson. I just would, just listening to that, because I think my big concern is, is the whole point of them adding that additional division chief was to be able to put the others on shift, and so that wouldn't happen. So it completely would shut down the whole thought of the division chief, divisional, like leader out there on shift. So I would like to ask you if we can, see if we can figure out how to budget in that second division chief.
Glad to do that. We can bring you that and the total cost for the three FMO, because that's also a push-to-shift type model.
Yes.
And we'll look at whatever offsets. That was not something they provided to start with, but we can look and see if there's an overtime offset for at least part of it.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Potem.
I definitely agree with that. I mean, as we, no doubt that we're paying a lot more for overtime, so I think this will help to balance that, answer the call, and also address, you know, I see that growth and how we're, I keep hearing from folks that they're being stretched to the limit, and so I think this will help to address that as well. So I fully support that. So I fully support that.
Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, let's move over here. We do have one fee change. This, of course, is through the Fire Marshal's Office. This is a new fee for the fire prevention device or systems in the nursing homes, the small ones up to sixteen residents, one hundred dollars. So this is one that doesn't exist today. Ready for municipal court? Okay, you will see in the municipal court, a reduction in the overall budget. Compensation is increasing due to part-time and temporary pay, but we have offsets coming from removing one of the vacant support specialist positions. This is also, the judge is employing the model that we did in parks a year ago and that is to take off the full-time marshal, to take it off as a full-time equivalent, and instead provide that service with two part-time marshals. And of course, you do have a benefits decrease when you do that. It's a less expensive alternative. I think they've done that to some extent already. Judge was here earlier, I do believe it is working very well.
It is.
There he is, yep. I knew he was here somewhere. I put my glasses on if I'm going to look all the way to the back. Benefits, you do see the decrease due to the full-time staff eliminations. The STAR program that existed before, it was in the current year's budget, that program no longer exists. Scheduled charges are going down on I T and on telephone. Capital outlay, their tax notes have paid out fully, so they don't have that expense anymore. Total change, two point one five million to one point nine five five million. Lubbock Police Department.
Mayor Potem.
So Judge, do you mind coming up? Because I have a couple of questions for you.
Walk the aisle, Judge, from the back row.
Once again.
Judge, so how many marshals do you currently have?
We have two full-time marshals and then we hired the security firm that does the security for here in Citizens Tower and they're providing us with one full-time security and one part-time security.
So you're not eliminating the other two fire marshals, you're just eliminating...
We actually eliminated two positions, okay? As they retired or went on to another job. We didn't fill those positions. So after talking to Mr. Howerton and discussing it with Amy, my court administrator, we agreed to go this route instead. Where hiring the security firm is going to entail, there's going to be security there every day instead of having a marshal call in sick or vacation, we're going to have somebody there at all times.
Okay, and you don't have to pay all of the benefits and...
Exactly, it's going to be a decrease in the benefits and the, well, and not the salary, but the benefits that we, we don't have to pay, you're correct.
I understand now, thank you so much, Judge.
Any other questions?
I don't believe so, thank you.
Yes, sir.
No, I don't believe there were. No more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Atkinson.
Okay, thank you. We'll go over to the Lubbock Police Department. Current year operating budget, ninety point eight seven, proposed budget ninety-two point seven, it's a two percent overall increase. Compensation and benefits is up due to the step pay increases, which there's your four percent, the one civilian public service officer, five patrol officers, some part-time pay, and then of course, for benefits line item, it'll be your health premiums, T M R S, workers' compensation. Go down to the supply line item, that is going up by, that is going up due to the change from the current style of soft armor that they wear to a better style, a more protective style of soft armor. Promotional exams, cost of ammunition. Council, remember, one of the recent changes that we have made really to assist with recruiting and staffing over there, we now have the ability to do two tests per cycle in two different locations. So one would be always in Lubbock, one would be in another selected town, as well as the lateral transfer program where we can bring in officers at those initial ranks and give them credit for their years of service. We can't give them rank, we can give them credit to do that. Slight increase in the maintenance charges at fleet. Training costs are increased, a big part of that is the cost is going up for us to continue to use Reese, so it's not the actual academy building, we own that. We do pay what's called a common area maintenance or a CAM, that's part of the conditions of owning that building. It's really for the use of the ramp space, the big concrete space for the driving training. That's something that I'd like to find a solution to, we do not have that solution proposed as part of this budget. We do have a one-time carryover that was for the wreck vehicle replacement program that is coming out, so that is taking your other charges line item down pretty significantly. And then scheduled charges are up at the department's request. Over the last year, we have outfitted the sworn personnel with cell phones, so that program has been finished and that keeps traffic off of the radio, off of the M D Ts while the officers are out working on a particular incident. Capital outlay is down because now their tax notes are paid down. There are also some capital projects that you'll see later for P D.
So anybody else have any questions before I ask mine? Okay. So I appreciate the work you've done in this budget. I, you know, I believe that, and I've discussed this with you, this isn't a surprise to you, but you know, when we had a discussion about our priorities, I believe we, it was pretty clear that we were not just prioritizing public safety, but particularly within public safety, it was due to our crime statistics here. And we can talk about the crime statistics, you know, night and day, they seem to go down from twenty-two to twenty-three, but they appear to be going up again this year, at least in some very concerning areas. The importance of public safety, and I believe it was almost across the board, the priority, priority for this council. And so I'm just concerned about how this budget actually does reflect the fact that our police aspect of our public safety budget reflects that priority. In the five positions, in the pay, you know, if we have, if we have a need to hire more and to fill positions that are not filled to get people to either move here or to, and I believe that's really what we need to try to do, that's an aspect of that. So that's one of my concerns. And so I'm just going to ask you to explain how you believe that this budget reflects the priority we've placed on public safety and particularly on the police.
Well, this budget, again, we've got the highlights in here, you're adding five patrol officers, that was five more than were initially requested by the police department. You have more than a two million dollar increase in their funding here. You have more than two million dollars plus all the additional technology that's coming on in your capital budget. With what I believe to be the funding constraints and the needs of the rest of the city, this is what we have been able to do. We have those constraints that apply everywhere. The vast majority of the input or the emphasis and the expense is going into this, so we'd certainly be glad to do more, but it will take additional revenue to do such.
Dr. Wilson.
And these questions may be for Chief Herman. Seth, are you back? There you are. Come on up. I know, he's hiding in the back.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. So some staffing questions for you, Chief, and this is in our big binder, so I don't know if you have it in front of you, I was just looking at, so we're asking for five patrol positions, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, was that all you asked for, for position-wise?
That's what we started with.
That's where you started, okay. So just looking in at the positions for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, so we have it listed and broke down for us as patrol, just basic patrol, and then we have it broke down by the division station, so north, south, and east.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is the difference between patrol and those three different divisions? Like for the position-wise, why would they, why would one be classified just as patrol and not under one of the stations?
Well, they would eventually be divided up among the stations, the five are just within the patrol area, so they would be relegated to street operations initially.
Well, when I'm looking in here, there's actually four listed, that's what I'm, that's what's, it may be hard for you to see what I'm looking at, so this is in our big binder under the overview, and maybe Mr. Atkinson can help me with this. Because right now, it says we have eighty-six under just patrol, this is on page one fifty-four of the big, the big budget. So it says eighty-six under patrol and then it says eighty-two under north, eighty-four under south, and eighty-four under east. So it wasn't just the five, it's like a whole separate, there's like eighty-four positions that aren't listed under any of the patrol stations.
Okay.
You see where I'm looking where it says eighty-six and then eighty-two, eighty-four, eighty-four for this year's coming positions?
Yes, ma'am, I believe I do.
That's what I was trying to figure out, where the eighty-six patrol, it just says patrol, like they're just basic. It's not listed under north, south, or east. What are those eighty-six patrol positions?
I would assume that those are relegated to collateral positions within the patrol division.
Okay, so they're not, so they're not assigned to one of the three divisions, like the stations?
It's a generalized assignment.
Okay, so do they go out on patrol?
Yes, ma'am.
They actually go in...
Patrol operations capabilities, yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to, I was trying to figure out how they were delegated with four different things when we had the three divisions, like the stations.
If I might maybe pose a question, Chief, that's going to include like your traffic squad?
Yes, sir.
They're not assigned to a station, they're assigned to the city.
Yes, mainly headquarters station, but they do, obviously...
That group works out of headquarters, but their job is some patrol function, some specialized function.
Patrol-related functions with a specialty.
So, and these are going to be tough questions, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I'm...
So on patrol, at each of these stations, we have eh, plus or minus eighty-ish, eighty-four to eighty-two, that's kind of what it's looking like. So it looks like we actually decreased in the south patrol division and the east patrol division by one each. What is our busiest station?
Looking at the numbers, last time we reviewed them, it was east station, if I'm not incorrect on that. North is the least busy, I think east is the most and south following.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out, if we're asking for five new ones, but we reduced two at the two busiest stations?
Well, the reduction was because of personnel constraints and areas that we needed to funnel those into, to maximize on capabilities beyond patrol. Unfortunately, as you know, anytime we have to drain manpower, it comes from patrol, which is why we're working now to bolster the patrol numbers and create a set percentage of allocated personnel specifically to patrol operations so that we don't have that ongoing issue.
Okay, so then my other question is, is in our last meeting, in July twenty-third meeting, we had, I think it was the second maybe read on the consent, we eliminated two patrol positions to essentially move them up to a one deputy chief position and one sergeant position. And those were patrol positions, I think were vacant at the time.
That is correct.
So if they were vacant and now we're asking for five more, are we going to even be able to fill the five that we're asking for?
I would suggest that eventually we will, but with the number of census, with the census numbers we have, which is roughly one, two-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-eight, if I'm not mistaken, I would suggest it's actually higher than that. We're, our goal is two officers per thousand people for the type of crime we deal with. That puts us at five-hundred-and-thirty-three allocated personnel. Do we anticipate reaching that number in the near future? No, probably not, but unless we move that needle continually higher, we're never going to get even close. So this five positions, if we eventually get them, which with our robust recruiting drive that we're going through right now and the inclusion of our lateral transfer program, which I would anticipate within the next couple of years is going to pay dividends, then we have a great chance of reaching not only that additional five positions that we requested, which as you pointed out, is actually three patrol, but increasing it beyond that.
Okay, so currently, how many vacant patrol positions do we have?
On paper, it's a little over twenty, but if you look, if you take out the probationary officers who haven't yet made it through the program, as well as the academies, we're in the upper forties.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the math in my head, and we're asking for more of those positions that we don't even have filled.
Yes, ma'am, I understand where you're going with it, but again, I think if we don't continue to add these positions, we're absolutely not ever going to catch up.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you, I mean, I definitely want to see more patrol officers. My worry is, is we're funding a position that we're struggling to get filled. That's my, that's my concern, is, I mean, I'd give you twenty-five more if I could because I would, I would love to see more guys and, you know, and girls out there patrolling, it's just we're not feel, we're not filling those vacant positions. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to fill these that we're going to budget to you if we already have twenty vacancies. That's my worry.
Well, I would suggest that those twenty vacancies could quickly fill up within the next year and a half. Again, I'm moving back towards the, not only the academy level, but also the lateral transfer, which is just now getting going and we're having more and more applied, so I anticipate us at least reaching our allocated number within the next year and a half.
Okay, so you think you can get us with those positions filled?
I do, yes, ma'am.
One of the things that I keep hearing, Chief, is that on paper, it says we have all these patrol positions, but people are seeing less and less actual officers out patrolling. How many do we have out that are patrolling per shift?
Well, it depends on the shift, obviously.
Sure, just estimating.
The minimum number is twenty-four.
Okay.
So it's a minimum number that we have on one given shift would be twenty-four per shift.
So out of five hundred-something positions, we only have twenty-four officers out patrolling?
Well, there's obviously overlap too. We created the shift so that there's at least a few hours of overlap between days and evenings.
When it's those peak times?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so ideally, how many think should be patrolling at once in a city of almost three hundred thousand people?
How many would I like? What's ideal? I would like a hundred officers out there.
Actually driving the streets?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's what I want to say, I mean, I'll give you as many as I always can, I just want to make sure they're actually out on that street. That's what I ask, is that we put them in a car and we get them out there and we get them visible to our public?
Sure.
Because I think that's the biggest complaint that I hear is, we have all these people and over the years, and I've lived here my entire life, so forty-plus years, is that we're seeing less and less actually uniformed officers out driving around. And, you know, were they that highly visible, where they're just driving and patrolling and that they're, you know, down at headquarters or, you know, moved up and now in a desk job, but I want to see these guys out on the street.
And I understand that, I think two factors that need to be taken into considerations. Number one is the call volume. Our people are relegated calls for service, so their proactive capabilities has diminished somewhat because of limited numbers and increase in our populace. But number two, there are also investigative elements that must be working those cases beyond the patrol level. And so a lot of those personnel are delegated exclusively to investigations, person crimes exclusively. So you have to have one and the other to work in tandem and those are our two biggest necessities right now.
And I think I just ultimately, because when I was looking through the book, I noticed that south was going to lose one, east was losing one, just in the counts here and, you know, with the additional five, I just, I would like to encourage everybody to make sure when we, when we get those patrol positions, I'd like to really see them out patrolling.
They will be, ma'am, and in this next budget year, we're also going to switch around some positions and push them back to patrol so that we do have a greater visibility capability and the proactive enforcement effort. I think everybody can agree that statistically speaking, the only way to curb crime is through proactive enforcement, so that's our goal.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent on that, Chief. Thanks, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gashin.
And Chief, excuse me. Chief, do you have any requests that were not included in the budget that was presented to us here?
I did. Where would you like for me to begin?
Maybe big picture overview.
Big picture overview. I would like to increase our P S O numbers, our public service officer numbers, which are our civilian complement. That one position that's been allocated is specifically for our property and evidence room and that transfer over to our new building, once it's completed, they're going to continue to need that additional person as well as more people in order to efficiently and effectively control the, the ongoing and outgoing of property and evidence. Beyond that, there are several positions within the department that are manned by sworn personnel now, that eventually would be turned over to, to non-sworn personnel. I would like to have most of our people carrying a gun and badge on the streets or conducting investigations in enforcement capacity. So that's the goal moving forward. And that would have accommodated eight to ten new P S O officers that once the transfer of property and evidence is complete, they would be funneled out to parking enforcement and other duties that are currently, some of which are maintained by sworn personnel.
Any other broad categories that you would like, that you requested for this year's budget?
Nothing that I can think of right now, beyond obviously the equipment that you already... Um, nothing that I can think of right now beyond, uh, obviously the equipment that you already.
And I shared some similar concerns as Dr. Wilson about filling the vacant positions. Um, you know, and looking at compensation and benefits, for example, we see relatively small increases in those areas. Do you feel like you have, excuse me, you have the tools and the resources you need to completely staff the department, um, with this proposed budget?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part.
Do you feel like you have the resources and the tools that you need to fully staff the department with the budget as presented?
Uh, I think that from a personnel standpoint, you're asking if I need more personnel and allocated funds for that, I would say yes. Um, if you're asking if the current budget accommodates what we currently have, I would suggest from a retention standpoint, more money would be appreciated.
And, and that's, I think also ties in with recruiting in my mind, um, that the, the compensation is an element of, of recruiting. But I don't know if that's part of what you're requi- that you would request in an ideal scenario or?
I would suggest that the higher the, uh, the personnel are paid, the more retention capabilities you have and the better your hiring capabilities as well. Especially from a lateral transfer program. Um, as y'all or me are, are probably already aware, the lateral transfer program allows us to hire seasoned officers. Who already have experience and have been through the, uh, accreditation and licensing capability. So we're actually just putting them on the streets as a field training officer program, an abbreviated program at that. And turning them back out on the streets as, as full-fledged officers. That's where I, I believe that we're gonna, we're gonna help ourselves in the long run. Not just raising them up through the academy level, but this lateral program.
Can you give us an estimated, uh, impact for the budget to put officer pay at a level that you would, um, consider adequately competitive?
Well, I, from a chief of police standpoint, I'd like us to be number one in the state, obviously, but I do understand the monetary restrictions to that. I haven't discussed it with the association. I know that they discussed it with management exclusively and perhaps some of y'all as well. I wasn't involved in those talks. I would say something along the lines of what they projected or at least a halfway point, if that makes sense.
As a big picture, I want you to have the, the tools and resources that you need to, to perform your mission. Is there anything else that, um, that you would like to, uh, request for this budget cycle?
Uh, the things that we've requested from a, predominantly from a technology standpoint beyond personnel. I think we're gonna be able to accommodate with, um, special revenue funds. That's my hope. So it won't be a, a strain on, on the, uh, city coffers at this moment. That I think we have that taken care of. Is my, that's my hope anyway. So, no, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Potem.
Thank you, chief. Um, before I ask you questions, I just, I do have to say that on a national scale. We are seeing, um, issues with all police departments hiring, you know, in part because of image and part because it's, it's tough work. And there's no guarantees at the end of the day. And so, you know, I think it's always important for us to be proactive, but on that note, um, let's talk about real quickly retention. How are we doing retention wise? You know, because I've seen officers come in young and they don't always stay. Because we're not offering attractive salaries or increases for them. So that's one thing. And then we also address retirement because I've seen that you've had some retirements happen a lot lately. And that's why, you know, I'm kind of on the fence with both. On one part, I do see that there is a need. And on the other part, I'm with Dr. Wilson and I feel like we have to be really careful. But I know that it is an issue that has to be addressed because police departments are changing and we need to move with the change. So will you just elaborate a little bit on retirement, retention and the competition that exists across the nation?
Well, obviously, I, I think every agency is competing for essentially the same people. Um, luckily, we're not in the metroplex. We're kind of isolated, thank goodness. So there's a, there's still competition, unfortunately, in West Texas. We're dealing with our neighbors to the south as well as north. And then we're also trying to recruit from those larger agencies and as well as smaller agencies in the metroplex and El Paso region from opposite ends of the state. So it, it's a, it's kind of a robbing Peter to pay Paul when it comes to stealing from agencies within the immediate area. But that's the nature of the beast right now. And you're right, it's a difficult job and it's becoming more difficult. Um, I think a lot of people very often get into this line of work thinking that everybody's gonna love them and unfortunately, no one does sometimes. So it just is what it is. Now, from a retention standpoint, obviously, the better the salaries, the better the compensation, the more likely are we to keep these people. I would like to avoid at all costs, men and women leaving the Lubbock Police Department to go to another agency. I think that, uh, there, that should never happen. Now, I understand the wanting to go to a federal agency that specify, that specifically deals with a certain type of crime, if that's their niche. But, uh, I think by and large, we definitely can draw those people back here. I think, uh, local police work is far better than any of the other federal or state agencies. So that being said, it is compensation that keeps people here. That and a, a solid working environment and family atmosphere.
I know that you mentioned something about being proactive and I, I totally agree with you on that. You have to be proactive instead of reactive. And I also, um, listened to the mayor who said that crime has increased, but I understood that we've had a decrease across. In every area. Is that not true? I'm, I'm a little bit confused about what, you know, have we had an increase in some areas that?
It, it varies from month to month and those months, the months currently in twenty twenty-four are being compared to the, the same month in twenty twenty-three. And then timeframe's up to those points. Um, so it's gonna, it's gonna vacillate. It's gonna be cyclical, but overall, yes, it is down. Uh, and we continue to, to push it down. That's the intent, obviously. Predominantly from, uh, anything crime related towards a victim, an actual person, uh, not property related, but that's still a big, big concern as well. Our goal is to attack the narcotics side of it, because I will tell y'all. Uh, the vast majority of crime that we deal with has a nexus, direct nexus to narcotics, narcotics use and trafficking. If we attack that, I think that we, uh, we make a huge dent in the other collateral crimes. But yes, ma'am, it is decreasing.
I know you said you wanna get to a certain salary that is appealing to folks wanting to go into law enforcement. Um, do you feel like right now is a good time for the city to? I know that I've heard different things, some requests, and you just said you wanted to be number one in the state, but. It's, I think we are kind of a little bit at, in a difficult spot because for me, you know, it's also important that we see. I, I would love to see an increase, no doubt, but I, for me, I also wanna see an increase with all of our employees. Do you think that would be unfair?
No, ma'am, not at all. I mean, I'm, I, I don't wanna degrade anyone else's position within the city. I, I know that we wanna give everybody equal opportunity to, to rise up within the city government, make a solid and profitable living for themselves and their families. I would not suggest otherwise. But what I will say is if we can't curb crime, we're not gonna have people moving here and wanting to.
I agree. I agree with you on that, no doubt, because I, I know that, you know, like I said, there's no guarantees. When you leave it for the day to go work and on the streets or whatnot, there's never an assurance that you might not make it home. So I want our officers to feel valued because unlike what you said, there's still a lot of people that do have a high regard. For our police department and they are appreciated, but, you know, we probably need to look a little bit. I've, I've seen some type of increase, but definitely that's where the city manager, I think, is gonna play a very significant role. And to see if there's any wiggle room, but at the same time to make sure that there's equity in how we're doing that.
Understand. Yes, ma'am. I would agree.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Collins.
Chief, first of all, let me say thank you for choosing Lubbock. You're new here and we appreciate you and your family coming. Uh, and also appreciate the work that your officers do for our city. Help me to understand, again, being one of the new guys and, and so I'm trying to, trying to wrap my brain around some of this math. We've got approximately three hundred patrol officers?
Relegate exclusively to patrol, sir. Um, well, you're looking at an average of eighty per. So right now, we're about one sixty to one, I wanna say one ninety-eight.
Okay, so we've got a, we've got a pay classification called patrol, but that doesn't necessarily put them in a patrol car, um, on, on the street?
Uh, that, that number is relegated a hundred ninety-eight or a relegated exclusively or allocated for patrol operations that you're describing. Not traffic enforcement specifically is a, is say a, a specialized unit, but to patrol operations.
Okay, so traffic is, is separate from that one ninety?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so how many are involved in, in traffic? And I, I don't know your business, so I'm, I'm asking.
Well, you've got, you've got two units of eight that are motorcycle related, uh, our motor cops. You've got a team of accident investigators that obviously investigate major collisions exclusively. So the traffic division is beyond the, the one ninety-eight that we're talking about. We have crime suppression teams, which are specialized units that are, are hitting those high crime areas, dealing with those. I mean, more egregious felons. They work in tandem with our tag personnel, uh, narcotics related, uh, groups. Who are focusing on exclusively on narcotics trafficking, our gang unit, the, the list goes on and on.
But they're all a part of your classification of patrol?
No, sir. I would consider that all of our enforcement capabilities. When you're saying patrol exclusively, we're talking about black and whites that are roaming the streets, answering calls for service that come in. That are not, say, exclusively traffic related or DWI teams. These are generalized patrol operations. Uh, I would consider them to be capable of doing anything within the law enforcement realm. So that's where our one ninety-eight number, allocated one ninety-eight number comes from.
Okay, so if, if, let's say you, you take vacations and all of that sort of thing, we've got, we've got a hundred and eighty people on three shifts. That gives us sixty, uh, units per shift and, and what you'd said earlier is there's about twenty-four, um, out per shift. It, what, what, how does that?
That's our minimum number, sir.
That's your minimum?
So those, those are the numbers that have to be maintained in order to fill sectors within those respective divisions. So within north, south and east. Um, obviously, we want the number to be higher, but with the lower number of personnel because of vacancies. Then you have FMLA leave because of an injury, um, a sickness, a family emergency. Then you have people need to take vacation.
True.
You have vacation, you have all of those different, uh, different off-time requirements that, that take people away from their regular job.
So your minimum's twenty-four, but on average, you've got forty, fifty cars on the street?
Depending on the day of the week. Now, with those, we have certain days of the week that are obviously identified as busier than others. So that minimum number comes up to the thirties, depending on the station.
Yeah. Per station?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So, uh, chief, I have a, a couple of questions and, um, and this just comes from conversations I've had earlier with, um, our sheriff. And talking about our tag force and of course, you were commenting on the problem with, uh, drugs and gang-related violence. Um, and he was commenting on how he thought they could certainly use more from our police department for that particular force. Which made a lot of sense to me since that's where a lot of the problems are. Um, do these five patrol positions, that doesn't really fill any new positions for the tag force, though, does it?
No, sir. And I would, just to clarify, those five positions are to push our allocated number of personnel up. If we could fill the vacancies that we have right now, we could allocate more to the proactive components of tag. I very much believe in the tag concept. I think it's already proven itself beyond measure here in the Lubbock area. And, and other places throughout, not only North Texas and West Texas, but the remainder of Texas. It's a great function. Uh, but right now, as we've discussed, we have to field the streets and we have to infill our investigative units. Um, I would love to fill tag. I would love to put more personnel at tag and eventually that's the intention.
And I think you really kind of, we, we've had conversations about unfilled positions, but then you have to get back to, you know, why are those positions unfilled? And, uh, you, you kind of commented on what it takes to actually fill positions, to get recruits in, to keep people here. And that is, part of it is your environment, your morale, which, uh, I think we all appreciate you being here. And we think that you're a big key to that here for our police department. But then the other aspect of it is, yes, what you do pay. And that's another aspect of it. So you, you can't just look at the unfilled positions and say, well, if we don't have the positions filled, you know, why are we adding new positions? Cause our goal is we need the positions. I think everybody's agrees, we need the positions. The question then is how do we get those positions filled and why are they not filled at the moment? Um, but I think the discussion here today is, uh, kind of focused on, you know, two aspects of it, morale and pay. And those are the drivers of that, the, how we are able to do that. Um.
Dr. Wilson.
So this year, chief, meeting with the police association, um, they, and the president of the association is, I think, I think Rayland's here. I think I saw him back there today, but asked for a twenty-four percent raise. Which, do I think you deserve it? Absolutely. Do I think that I want all of our offers, officers out there to be well compensated? Do I want you to be able to recruit, retain and serve the citizens of Lubbock? But twenty-four percent, I think, and, and I don't have the, the numbers right in front of me, was close to nine or more than nine million dollars. Which is more than the entire proposed increase of the budget for the entire city. So, and I, I know over, and I don't know the exact numbers off the top of my head, cause I was trying to dig back, but we've already increased salaries. Twenty, anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-six percent over the last three years. So I definitely think the council and previous councils have been really working hard to make sure LPD is well taken care of. You know, with the new headquarters, with the, the, the patrol stations, with trying to give positions, obviously trying to increase salaries. But, I mean, there's just absolutely no way to do twenty-four percent in one year. So the one thing that I had discussed with the association is I would love to see LPD go to a meet and confer type of situation. To where you guys are able to negotiate longer contracts to be able to get to those goal numbers that y'all need to get to. That all of our public servants need to get to and that will put it into the budget already worked in. Versus us sitting up here all day long arguing and debating a percent here, a percent there and what y'all need. Y'all can do that and, and really get in and then it's on paper. And that way we can get you guys to where we need to be. Um, I love that lofty goal of first in the state. I don't know if we're ever gonna be able to afford it, but I, I appreciate you, uh, shooting for the stars. Um, but I, I am happy with the way everything is going. Every, every year, it's been a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. And I know a little bit more counts every year, but twenty-four percent this year is just, there was just no way to get it above the entire budgeted amount for the whole city.
That's understandable. I think they understood that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think the meet and confer idea is good. That's for next year though, really. I think we're sitting here talking about this year and what we're gonna be doing this year for our police officers. So, um, and I don't think any of us are up here thinking about a twenty-four percent raise, but we are trying to figure out how. We, um, make sure that we can hire the officers that we need here in Lubbock to deal with. Uh, what I think everybody agrees is a, a crime problem, even though the numbers may be falling. I don't think any of us are comfortable with where those levels are.
No, sir. I would say zero crime is probably the direction we need to go.
Never gonna get there as long as people are sinful by nature.
I, I would agree.
But, uh, um, but, but I think everybody has an expectation that, uh, there are things that we can do to get control of those numbers. And in particular areas to the crime that's related to drugs and, and gang-related violence. So appreciate your time. Any other questions for the chief while he's here?
Just that we want you to know that we are supportive of you.
And, and we understand that, we feel and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank, thank you. Chief, thanks for being up here. Counsel, just a quick reminder, I know everybody knows. He's maybe at day sixty with us, uh, and I think he has done a phenomenal job. Probably should have stood down there. I saw the eyes crossed when we handed him his, his budget book back, but chief's doing a great job. Agree with everything that's said, uh, but I wanna put a couple of other things out on the table. So today, actually as of July, we have twenty-one sworn vacancies out of four hundred and fifty-one. That's a vacancy rate of five percent. Love for it to be zero percent, but we all understand how academy, training, recruiting, how, how that cycle goes. Chief, what's the vacancy rate in other departments?
Oh, well, when I saw it as the chief in Midland, we were fifty down and allocate a hundred and ninety-five, so.
So closer to a twenty-five percent vacancy rate?
Closer to twenty-five percent, yes.
And I think Midland's one of them that we'd like to find a way to catch up on pay.
Yep.
We know pay's important, but it didn't fix it there.
No, sir, it didn't. Now, we could steal from there.
I'd love to do that.
I would, too.
I hope this isn't being recorded.
I'm sure it is.
And broadcast live.
Yeah.
Well, we did steal from Midland, therefore, we take, we take pride in stealing from Midland. In fact, counsel, there's an introduction we could do tonight. Mr. Keenum, would you make an introduction for us? Mr. Keenum is leaving us as the city engineer to trade in for a black and white.
Yes, absolutely not. No, what Mr. Atkinson was referring to, that our new assistant city engineer, Kerry Kaler, uh, just started today, so he, he came from Midland of all places, so I think that's what, as we're talking about stealing from Midland, we did the same thing, so. Yes?
So, th- thanks, Mike. That was totally off schedule and maybe not even related, but. So we can fill those positions, we've got to keep pushing salary. Our lateral program, I think, is about four months old. It may, may be just a hair older than that. It's, and we've not yet been able to do the dual testing. So the next one is where we will start that. But counsel, anything that y'all want to give, we would love to have. The numbers are getting better, they're not where we want them to be. I would put Lubbock's recruiting up against any similar-sized agency in the state. So any help, we appreciate, but just want to leave it on a positive note, that the department's doing well. They, they really are. So, Chief, thanks, and thanks for jumping up here in the middle of this. I kept thinking you would grab Nathan or John and pull them up, but.
I thought about it, but I can sink just as bad, as good as anybody else. There's no reason to pull anybody else down with a Titanic.
Chief, I appreciate it, thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Okay, anymore, are we ready to move? Let's go to public health. Uh, public health budget from one point seven eight to one point eight zero. Slight increase, uh, in the compensation. We have a maintenance decrease, a supplies decrease, professional services decrease, as well as other charges. Scheduled charges are increasing, um, and a lot of that is because we're now moving into, or they are actually in our own new building over at Fiftieth and Avenue U. Questions on public health? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, put him.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed that you were, um, do you mind coming up? What the heck, it's the last hour, let's bring everybody up. Now, I saw that you were decreasing a couple of jobs. Is that, I mean, aren't you growing?
Yeah, I, I would call that an adjustment, um, rightsizing after COVID. Um, there were some positions we were projecting that we would be able to fund under grants. Those did not come to fruition, um, so I'm very comfortable with letting those go.
But public health is definitely another important concern of, of the public or the citizens. Is there anything that we need to be aware of with your growth that's happening in your department?
No, I'm, I mean, I've had a lot of support, um, from counsel in the past to allow us to figure out what public health should look like in Lubbock. Um, I've appreciated the flexibility. We're trying some new, um, ways of billing and trying to increase some of the revenue generation coming into the public health department. Um, that's why we've been able to offset, um, some of those costs. I just appreciate having that flexibility from Jarrett to allow me, um, to do that. I'm ninety-nine percent sure that that will all come to fruition the way that we've, um, estimated things. So I'm really confident about where we are, um, right now for the next year.
Thank you for your great work.
Thank you.
No other questions? All right, Mr. Atkinson?
Okay, thank you. Mayor, counsel, that finishes the operating budgets for the general fund. Your final few slides for tonight will be on the capital from the general fund, so we'll jump right into that. The first, and there's really no action on this one, this is your ARPA project tracking. Counsel, remember that as we have been able to reallocate or we've had dollars remaining, those are all going down to the line that says utility projects at the bottom. That's got eight point four million remaining in it, that is the West Lubbock Water Expansion Project. I do expect that there will be one more reallocation, again, probably October, I don't know that we want to wait much longer than that, where we will again comb through those projects and per the council's resolution, we'll come back to you and put those dollars also into the West Lubbock Water Expansion, so questions on ARPA? Okay?
Mr. Atkinson, what do you estimate the total cost of that project to be? Do you have any idea?
Oh, it's in my slides for tomorrow. The first phase is in the thirty to forty million dollar range.
Thank you.
But remember, every dollar that comes out of this is a dollar that doesn't later come out of rates. So you're, you're, you're not making the project cheaper, you're making the impact of the project cheaper. Okay? Move into administrative services for the capital projects. The first one that is recommended for funding, and I'm only going to go over the new money project, but if you have questions about the others, let me know. Uh, facility roof replacements means exactly what it says. We're asking for three hundred and eighty thousand this year. Two hundred thousand of that is what we call prior year cash, it's cash that was taken out of other projects that had completed. And then we have a hundred and eighty in new cash, so you're, you're working now on what comes out of like your general fund reserve and that type of stuff. Equipment replacement fund, this is also for your facilities department, and it is exactly what it stands. Maintenance and so forth on that. The next is the parks capital. The project you see on this, the three point nine five nine million for park development. That is not city money, so if you go to the right, you see it as in the other category. Counsel, that is the money that is involved in the Tech Dot condemnation of the property at fifteen eighty-five in Milwaukee. Counsel, for a number of years, has said that the future use of those dollars is to expand the trail network and, you know, as we lead out towards Lake Seven and back into town. That, that whole process is still tied up, um, as y'all are aware. So the three point nine is real, we want to put it into this capital project, and then the, the project is locked, so to speak. We are not proposing an expenditure out of it. This money needs to sit until we finish with the other elements of this, and then we can start programming it towards use. But there's no use this year, you're rather locking and saving those dollars. That makes sense? The one point one six is the prior money, you add those two together, so that'll be the total that's in that account.
And for the benefit maybe of our new council people here, you might explain why, why we have to lock it here, but we can't use it right at the moment.
I'll do this maybe at a very high level, and if need be, we can go into executive session. Tech Dot had to ultimately condemn the land that we own at fifteen eighty-five in Milwaukee at the ballpark for their, uh, Loop Eighty-Eight, which the project the city supports and in fact has contributed dollars towards. There is a dispute over the value of that land. So that was why the condemnation process was used. Tech Dot appealed its own award through the condemnation at the same time the city was preparing to appeal. They think it's too high, we think it is too low. So there are still pending, uh, court matters to settle that question. Continuing on, um, I'm on the next page now. You see the Lake Six Fountain Inlet, so a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars new money. This is to repair the inlet that's out in the lake at number six, and it will ultimately turn on the fountain, allow the fountain that's out there to be turned back on. Obviously, that's an aesthetic improvement. It's much more than that. Lake Six is where all the water ultimately flows down into and stops. It is now the headwater of your Lake Seven, it is where the La Prino water will start flowing in as well. Having more live water coming in and moving through the lake will really help us with the water quality out there as well. So it's got kind of two purposes to do. Moving down, we've got trees for the new transfer station, so this is to start trying to build some tree lines out on that roughly seventy-seven acres that we own out there. Doesn't get it all finished, but it gets its start. Let's talk a bit about the clap pool repair. Counsel, this is the item we were told to bring back, and so we have. We talked about it a little bit when we did the priorities discussion. So this is the amount of money to basically put a new set of equipment on that pool. It would no longer be inside in that well system, which is where it's structurally failed. It would be outside, we did that on some other pools over the years. And it would attempt to fix the leak between the two halves of the shell of the pool. Previously, I was asked, well, does this give us five years, ten years, a year? And I may not have answered as well as I could. The equipment, the equipment would last for many years. Um, we, we have a track record with that. The complete and total unknown is how long we can make the repair to the joint in that shell last. So that pool, the part that's in the ground full of water is literally built in two different pieces. And there's a joint that tries to seal it in between there. That joint's over seventy years old. The pool loses water, it's been losing water. We have no way to say that this is a good use of those dollars, because that shell could last for several years, or it could last for none. We could basically be out there pumping water into it as fast as it's coming out. Nonetheless, it was a council directive to bring it back, I bring it back to you, um, and that is in there. I don't know that you have to settle that one tonight. We can talk about it, we can come back to it. Just know that I personally don't have confidence that you'll keep that pool open for very long if we do this. Okay? You want me to jump to the next one? Okay, moving over into public safety. Um, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand for the outdoor warning system. This is the funds, number one, we need to replace one that's been hit. A motor vehicle got loose and took one out, so we need to replace one. And it's to have one for growth. So would expect for you to see this, and we have done this since the day we added the system. We'll just keep trying to budget for one more, one more, one more, and keep up with our growth as we go forwards. The next item, one point eight million. Purchase installation training for specialized camera systems. This is the new Axon system for the police department. So we purchased it this year. I think if it's not fully implemented, it is really close. The real cost of this is about two point one million. We thought the initial cost would be higher than it was, so we've saved those dollars and we're applying it for this year. It's one point eight this year. You will see it now in every budget year to keep that system going. It's a great system, the guys and gals that I've talked to, they love it, it does a lot of neat stuff. It's just going to carry a cost. The next are electronic ticket riders, so adding more of that capability, forty-seven thousand. Then you have a complete, or the start of a complete refit of the self-contained breathing apparatus, I think I said that correctly. The air packs for the fire department, and then personal protective equipment in the amount of four hundred. So those are your public safety capital items. Moving over to streets. We have three hundred thousand programmed into the ongoing, um, American Disabilities Act ramp and sidewalk project. We have been able to make lots of good improvements to neighborhoods that need it with that. The three hundred thousand is in the other column, that's gateway funds to help with that. Okay? Gateway. We've had this funded as low as a hundred, as much as five hundred, depending on the needs for the years, three hundred for this. Next is your Upland project, fourth to nineteenth, this is your bond project, eleven and a half million. Upland, nineteenth to thirty-fourth, also the bond project, eleven and a half million. Going to the next page, a hundred and fourteenth, Frankford to Slide, again, the bond. The second, a hundred and fourteenth project is Indiana to University. So right now, we've got it from Slide to Quaker. Quaker to Indiana is about to open, and then this now will take us Indiana to University on that. Uh, and you don't get very far east of university before that's a county road. So you're going to have a good corridor when we get through this. Final one for the bond projects for next year, group three of the bond projects is the residential unpaid roadways. Again, this is the group east of the interstate in the amount of four million. Moving down, here's your street maintenance money in the amount of fourteen million. Again, there's another five hundred for gateway, but it shows up in the gateway capital when we get there. Mayor, put him.
Going back to the street maintenance for twenty twenty-five. We increased it by a million, but we've also seen increases in what it takes to rebuild those seats. So really, it's not a, a real direct benefit, because it's going to cost us just as much, so is that firm? Is that like the final number for streets? It, it, our city is growing, and I feel like we just need to put a little bit more into streets.
Um, I, I would like to, but, uh, again, but there's not the additional dollars. And, and you're right, it's not a one-for-one increase, you're still gaining, you're, you're gaining significantly, but with the cost of materials, you know, it's not one-for-one.
Okay. Well, we got to increase it next year somehow.
We, we, yes, I totally agree. And, and again, right now, the target's eighteen, by the time we get there, it may be nineteen. And it's been a long process, but we, we've gone from less than seven, not all in cash. And you're over fourteen now in cash, so we just keep pushing it. I think Cheryl and her team can tell you, the first plug number I told them to put in the budget was street maintenance.
What?
The first absolute number, before you start, before she started her math, I put fourteen million dollars in here.
Very good.
Yeah.
And the goal is eighteen to get there, but we're doing it at about a million dollars, a million and a half a year, right?
Correct, and we've not ever gone backwards. We had one year during COVID, we had to hold it flat.
Hold it flat.
By losing that, it has gone up every year.
Right. So, and just for people who are concerned about our infrastructure, that, I mean, that's a major part of it. And, and we have a plan, and we're sticking to our plan on how to deal with that issue, for, for the streets at least.
Yes, sir, I would suggest in the general fund, we're doing now a, a good incredible job of funding what we need to take care of what we have with one exception, and that exception's parks. We're just, that, that one's hard to get money to right now. You've got tremendous new facilities for public safety, predominantly police, but Fire Station Twenty. This is still a new building, your municipal court next door. Your, we've proposed an increase in the facilities money to let them do the care and feeding of these and, and really your older buildings. The big challenge is going to be parks. Okay, continuing on, um, Master Thoroughfare Plan Update. This was requested at a larger number, we have pulled it down to this. We are supposed to do these every five years, I think it is important that we do these every five years. This lines up with what we need to do as we relate to the bond projects, as it relates to growth. And for those of us that also sit on the Metropolitan Planning Organization, this is ammunition for us to fight to get those dollars to Lubbock as well. So, all in, you see the total general fund capital now. I'm sorry, that, that's the total streets budget, it's fifty-seven point nine, but the vast majority of that is again in your bond. I'm sorry, that, that's the total streets budget. It's 57.9, but the vast majority of that is again in your bond projects. Let's go over to traffic. Um, backup power at signalized intersections. We are continuing our ongoing plan to end up with every traffic signal having its own battery backup. So we just keep doing it. Keep doing it. The next is the fiber optic expansion continuation. This, again, it goes through your traffic engineering, Mr. Bragg and his team. This is how we keep city facilities tied in. This is how we tie the traffic signals in, um, and everything else. David and his crew over the years have built, I don't think it's near the largest fiber network, because it doesn't go down to individual houses, but it's a pretty incredible thing that they have done. So your city, other than a couple of backups, backup runs, um, we only have one exception to where our stuff's not on our own fiber. And we're working towards picking that last one up. Um, traffic signals, FY '21 through '22 through '25 to '26. This is the dollars to continue adding signalized intersections as it's appropriate to add signalized intersections. The last one, signal cabinet ID badge access systems. We need to enhance the security that we have on all of these. These are the great big stainless steel boxes. And according to all of the experts in the IT world, this is the best way to do that. So this does not get all of that done, but it's all we can get done in a year to do that. Now we can take you to the total, that I tried to say earlier. Your total general fund capital is 67.7 million. 20 million dollars of that is new cash. 200,000 is stuff we've cleaned out of the couch cushions. You've got your 4.259 million. The bulk of that is the Tech Dot money. Some of it is the Gateway money. And then 43.3 is the number you'll see in your bonds. And we'll, we'll, that number will adjust a little bit before you issue it, but that's the budget number. Mayor, that officially makes this slide 101 of 101 slides.
All right, are there any cleanup questions from anyone at this point?
Mayor, would it help if I kind of ran through the list that I've got and have everybody tell me yea or nay, and then whatever else we need to add to it?
That sounds fine to me.
All right, so I'll start, just notes that I've made. Um, I need to pull forward the actual total cost of the vehicle replacements. We need to be sure we can answer what is the debt issuance for Lubbock Power and Light. I think we almost have it done, but that is producing the debt profile that was requested specifically for water and wastewater to see the, where the payoffs are, but I think by tomorrow, we can have all of it run, if you'd like to see that. I don't think it's a follow-up at the moment, but we had a discussion about, over the course of the next year, can we build a way to fund replacement of the turf that's out at the Burrell Huffman complex? Can we look at putting, adding in the second division chief? Its net costs, or its gross cost is about 190. There may be some overtime, you know, offsets or so forth. Um, we can also provide the cost on the three FMOs, the Fire Marshal Office people. Had a question, these did not end up in order, so I apologize, but we had a question. You know, we know what the dollars requested over the no new revenue rate are. Can we also provide the numbers? What would it be at the voter approval rate and some other metrics for you to see? We've had a discussion about dollars, pay, um, other things related to LPD. Specifically, there was a ask of the chief about the remaining public service officers. Um, that original request was 10. We funded one, so I have those numbers. We just need to pull them back out and get them to you. Had a couple of you comment, you know, what, what had been the requested raise at PD? And somebody mentioned nine. It was just a little over 9 million. Had a prior request. It didn't come up today, but I'll get it out either tonight or in the morning. I'd had a, a good question. When we show y'all professional services, it's a roll-up number, and it is highly variable what it is, depending on what department it is in. So under professional services, we may literally have close to 1,000 account codes. So we're going to take those and divide them out by department and send them to you that show you, in this department, it means this. In this department, it means that. So we will get that to you. Um, did I miss anything in specifics?
Dr. Wilson.
One thing, Jared, I would like to pull and look at is our hot tax stuff. We mentioned, we talked about it a little bit. Um, specifically when you said there's like a max to go to arts. I'd like to see if there's a max to go to parks and other things that bring people to Lubbock, so we can look at where we're at on hot tax and where potentially money can go in the future.
And those specifics, most of those, not all of them, are, will either be in day two or day three. As far as the proposed where to go, I think what I'm hearing is in addition to that, where could it go? Is that fair? Okay.
Mr. Greschek.
I'll echo Dr. Wilson's comment on the use of hot funds for, uh, park facilities. And also, I'd like to look at the, um, options that we have for using it to fund the museum programming rather than general fund revenue for that.
Mr. Rose.
Uh, Jared, we probably went over this, but, um, for the dollar to the base rate for the wastewater, was that taking into account for what decision we're going to make on sewer lateral?
When we left our last deal, and we, we didn't have consensus, but the more common thought was that model that we would roll out of that, but we need to provide an assistance fund underneath it. So yes, 50 cents of that at least can go to that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, with him.
I think on the hot tax, Jennifer did say parks, but I think we need to expand that just quality of life and general libraries, community centers, wherever we can get it there. If we can get it there, I think it's important. The other thing I wanted to mention is the ARPA funds. I know there, there's a possibility that there may be about half a million dollars. Is that correct or not?
Um, my best guess is about a half, plus, plus whatever interest accrues, because you, you do need to, you do need to allocate the interest, but yes.
So we can maybe have some other alternatives for that? I think that would be something, if it's possible.
So, remember the council approved a resolution not very long ago, June, I think, maybe?
That's right, that's right. I'm sorry.
That we would take that to the utility projects.
I slept since then. Sorry.
Well, I see everybody closing their books up, so.
I can put my pen down, Mayor?
I'm, I'm thinking that may be, uh, all we have for today. Now, what I want to encourage every, uh, councilperson to do is the discussion even about what we've covered today is, is not over. If you have questions, if you have issues you need to address with Mr. Atkinson, please do so. You know, ask your questions to him or Cheryl. You know, maybe she can answer that question better than even, uh, Jared can, depending on the kind of question, but don't, uh, and this discussion is, is, is not over. And we're not making any decisions today, tomorrow, the next day. This won't come up, you know, for quite some time. There will be, uh, discussions about the budget overall and different aspects. Everything we've talked about today, um, is things that we can continue to discuss, continue to look at. Uh, this is a work in progress, and there's so many different parts of it that we need to try to, uh, balance. We've talked about a lot of them today, um, and we can all continue those conversations, uh, on our own, uh, as we believe it is appropriate with Mr. Atkinson. So I encourage you to continue to do that, um, and we will be back here tomorrow at 2 o'clock. And we have a program tomorrow first, a little happy music tomorrow, uh, at 1:30, if you want to come join us. We'll have a little pre-meeting music, try to get everybody in a happy mood before we, and then a, a recognition, uh, before we get into our, our business tomorrow, so, uh, come enjoy that tomorrow. We are adjourned, I guess, for today.